Everyone's permission to make motion to pull the budget section of the program agenda up to follow public comment.
What's that name?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? My vote is aye. Okay, first up is Rosie MS, Alex. Did you want to be second?
You want me to come in front?
Yeah, that would be best, I think.
Just hit the button on there so we can hear you.
Alright, so I push it tall?
There you go.
Alright, perfect.
It just stays on, you don't have to push it each time. Counsel, the mayor, myself, have asked Rosie MS to present some information about their budget and their requirements for 2024 and some historical data.
Okay, so a lot of those numbers may have already been shared amongst the committee. I believe some were sent to you. The rest of the folks here?
Everybody has the, I think everybody has a copy of the charts.
Okay, okay. I might need Jeff Dukes if he's, he's somewhere, he'll show up. He's nearby. So reviewing those numbers, I don't specifically have them in front of me. Give him one second, I'll pull them up.
Can we get one copy?
Oh yeah, you have an extra copy, that's fine. Okay, so these should be the numbers from our last three years as far as income and call out numbers. Did Jeff?
Happened for calls.
There was, there was a nice one that Jeff, I only sent it to us, I don't know if he sent it to you guys too, that had a very nice kind of chart breakdown, line by line as far as what was then every graduate.
For income?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's the calls and the test with that to the income expense.
Okay.
For each year.
Alright, just feel your goal for it.
Sorry.
Okay, so if you guys have had some time to kind of peruse these numbers, you'll see that things have unfortunately just been steadily increasing in price over years, increase in call volumes, and not too much in change as far as returns that we're able to get from billing. So some of these numbers on here, if you look at kind of what we're pulling in as far as billing income over the past couple of years, you'll see that we have a fairly steady amount. When we get to this year, we've had to switch our billing company. As it's shut down, they essentially gave us a 90-day notice that, yeah, we're closing, finding a billing company. So we're hoping that that number will come upward sharply, but we'll see. And at this point, we're looking at, we're re-chassising an ambulance, which I'm not sure if that is computed in there. And our other vehicle has continued to have mechanical issues that thankfully have been under warranty. Alright, I don't know if you have a better way to present this?
I don't know where else to start.
Our numbers person, okay. Okay, so I left off very general, just as far as cost of the rising, we switched our billing company recently, just brought our billing returns down that we're hopefully going to see come back up. And despite how things, you know, look in there, they might look decently good, but I'm, you know, I'm very concerned as far as this one vehicle that we're still under warranty, so we're not having to pay out of pocket for repairs. But that warranty provider standing ends within a month or so, potentially even now. And if we're gonna have to either repair or crash that vehicle, new ambulance is like $500,000. So we can try and scrape the barrel and make things work somehow, but that's not really a great long-term solution.
So we're holding off on the ambulance, the price goes up dramatically almost every month, the price goes up. So we had a, we had a option to buy a chassis that had the, a new chassis to do a box swap, it's called a re-chassising. So we bought a chassis at a, kind of like a discount price, which was $62,700. If we would have waited a couple more months, it would have been probably over the $70,000 mark. The whole unit, buying the chassis in, the re-chassis, which is the box to a new chassis is $181,000. Again, if we would have waited longer, it would have doubled, not doubled, but it would have got considerably more expensive. Everything in our fire department, when it comes to maintenance of our vehicles, has increased dramatically since COVID. So when something comes up in front of us, we have to jump on it or we're gonna be paying more. Like Alex said, we did change our billing company. We are seeing improvements. We actually get a phone call from them, we get reports weekly. They're very beneficial to us. We're seeing income coming back. I mean, there was a little lag time because of the switchover, it's not an easy process. But right now, all our billing is going to Cornerstone. Pretty much everybody in our area knows who Cornerstone is, kind of like Wellspan. But that's working out for us as well.
Do you have a feel for what you're going to need in 2024?
We are currently in the process of doing our budgets now throughout the firehouse, fireside and ambulance side. We, our payroll is going up to be competitive, so that's increasing and we have to do the adjustments for that as well. It's not easy doing payroll for anybody that does payroll, but it's estimating at this point. And from what I'm understanding, to be competitive again, it might even go up more.
That payroll is probably, you know, we'll do our best to give you a very good estimate, as best as we can. But it's, some of you may have already looked at that Glen Rock study, I thought I saw somebody up here that had a copy of it. The field of EMS as a whole is just bleeding people. A lot of people got out due to COVID and left. So it's, it's more challenging recruiting people. And if you have somebody who is, you know, a good person in the field, are they gonna, you know, come here if we're not able to offer competitive wages? Or are they gonna go to somewhere like, you know, Wellspan, UPMC? So we're down a couple people at this moment, and thankfully we have some people who are kind of in full overtime to make sure that we have the ambulance fully staffed. And that overtime certainly doesn't help us with calculating what that payroll's gonna come out to.
So in the past, we were stable on, because the prices were going like skyrocketing. We really don't know what the cost of anything is anymore, but supplies, ALS, DLS supplies are going up. But we were stable back before COVID, but now everything comes to us very quick. And when it comes to us quick, you have to make that immediate decision. This budget, starting in 2024, we're gonna have a capital spending budget. We never really had to have that before because we were pretty much financially secure. But the prices of the things that, you know, even our roof is ridiculous on our building. But when we saw the price of a chassis at 67, and then we see what an engine, fire engine costs now, it's almost doubled in price, just in three years. And on the ambulance side, we can only, we only get funds only certain ways. There's only certain ways we can collect funds by our service, and we can only fill a particular amount, we have no control over that. We do membership fund drive, that's increased a little bit more in the past years. We would like to get more, I mean, for what we send out there, there are still a lot of people that don't partake in it. But medical billing, I'm not a coding expert or whatnot, but we do get funds, that's our biggest income. And our largest expense of 78% of our income coming in, it all goes out the payroll. So you have a small percentage to actually run your operation.
I think when Kim and I met with you, we suggested that you could use Savvy Citizen and possibly the newsletter for, you know, fundraising to get the word out, what each fundraiser is for, what you're trying to accomplish. So that might be another way to get the word out to people.
Well, fundraising, we mostly do fundraising on our fireside, our fleet staff, and there's the ambulance side. So they're always busy. So doing fundraising on the ambulance side, it's very minimal, very slim, because we don't have the staffing for it on this side. But we are in discussions of also doing the fireside, doing fundraising also for our medics side, since we do have volunteers that ride the ambulance on that side too.
I know, I hadn't seen a copy of a wish list for next year. And that was over $400,000 for EMS, for different equipment and things. If you put that together with the chassis, putting the new body on the chassis, possibly buying a new ambulance, you're gonna be out of business. Right?
I was just informed about the wish list. I don't think that went through the EMS committee that I'm aware of. I don't know much of what was on the wish list.
Some of it was training, some of it was equipment. I thought I had it here.
When we left that meeting, I think I need to clarify something. What you're, what he's referring to is a wish list, I mean, some of the stuff that you, like the new ambulance and coming up with your capital improvement fund, that would be in the, what you need to do is kind of fold what you need out of your list, you know, into your budget for 2024, either in whole or in part or some way. I mean, I guess, I mean, jump in if you have questions or correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what counsel needs you to do is tell us what you need in 2024. So you're gonna say, we need this amount of money, and we're gonna look at it. And right now, New Freedom Borough has approximately 11% to 15% of the calls, depending on whose number you look at. So, and we're going to try to provide, you know, we're at 11.2%. So we're gonna try to provide some amount in donations to come up to a level that will make it so that you don't go out of business. And what I'm hoping is that at the next meeting for EMS in Shrewsbury Township, that you'll be able to present that to all of us as a group, and you'll be able to say, you're part of this pie that we need is this amount. And it'll be based on the percents of calls that our residents give. So that's kind of what I was hoping head to head in that direction. This is a really good start, but I kind of need, I think we as a council kind of need 2024, you know? Might not be perfect, it never is, because it's a budget, but we need to know something that you need for 2024 so that we can do something in our budget cycle here.
So for the medic, we already purchased the chassis, so we're financing the switching of the box. We are, just on the phone, we're doing a grant, a state grant to find some of the box, so our interest rate won't be as high. So we're working on every way we can to get money to do the ambulance, because that's gonna be, that's a big cost.
Oh sure, yeah.
Did I hear you right, did you say 78% of your budget goes to payroll?
Income, yeah. There's payroll. And it goes up, that's our biggest expense. And I would, I'm glad to say that here, for a while now, we've actually had ALS coverage in our community almost every day.
From what I'm aware of.
Is one of your desires to still go with the chase trucks and we have a paramedic
So it's, it's something that we...
That's how this all started.
Those are the things I was gonna bring up. So there's, there's certainly the annual part of things, but I think the thing that's maybe a little harder to exactly budget for is things breaking, vehicles breaking, you know, we can certainly try and replace vehicles on a timeline, but every couple of years, that's gonna be, again, new ambulance is like 300, $300,000 to $500,000. The chase truck, that's, that's another thing that would be great to put in the service. I think the very rough estimate with like 20, 30, we could probably put one in service, 20, 30,000. But I think at this point anyway, we're trying to make sure that things are kind of level and stay afloat, but certainly something I want to think about.
The thing I think about is we're covering so many municipalities, Shrewsbury Township, Shrewsbury Borough, Cudores, who'd I miss? Us. We don't know where Glen Rock's gonna stand. That's a lot of territory for one company and one, you know, shift to cover. I don't know how you do it now, and I get a report every month. I know there are some times that you aren't able to cover it, you're on a call over in Shrewsbury Township, by the time you go attend to somebody, take them up to York Hospital or wherever, you're out of service for what, hour and a half?
About, yes.
What happens when Joe Smith's wife down the street has a cardiac arrest while you're going, "Thank God, we have local police that are trained in CPR," but they can't, you know, do that for 20 minutes. You guys gotta thumb her, right? And AMBO, it'd be nice if we had that in a chase car, a chase truck that could attend to those. I know we've had instances like that, where we have a cardiac arrest and we've gotta wait for jacunas. I think that's the, you know, as a council, we're, that's a disservice to our, to our residents. And I think we need to help out more to get that taken care of.
There was talks about us having a chase truck there for a while and it's gonna be managed during peak, peak time.
Right.
I don't know what the peak time is, more or less going to daytime, Monday through Friday.
Seven to seven is what the study says.
Unfortunately, the study, that's how the study started, we've been working, what, three years? Something like that, two and a half years, and finally got the results back, which is what we kind of thought the whole time.
Well, just like counsel, we, we hold positions annually, so when you have somebody in that role, sometimes it takes longer to put your vision together. So when they have a vision, they start putting it all together, and then we have somebody else that moves into that office that changes. So, but we have an EMS committee, they're strong, they're stable, they're gonna be around for a while. So we need, we had to get a group of people to be in that position for a period of time to rebuild, grow, and to be more stable. And with people coming in and leaving in a year and coming in, you have to start all over again. And then you, first you gotta get people familiar with how the whole setup is. I mean, I've been here for 15 years and I came from Maryland, you know, I'm proud of it, but when I came up here, I was totally lost on how things are up here compared to down there. And when we get people in those roles, they have to learn the whole system on how Pennsylvania does it, and it can be complicated, especially when you're just a volunteer that comes off the street and you have to learn the whole process of business and how your community works. It's difficult.
You did raise your rates of pay for your EMTs and your...
We did prior to that study being published.
Right, that's what, that's what I thought. I know, I go to the meetings, every fire meeting.
I don't wanna spend your time here trying to figure out which direction you should go. You guys have to come and tell us what direction you're gonna go, but we do have the meeting the 23rd. You're a week away from that, and I think you need to put together something to take to that meeting that says, this is what we need, these are, these are how your percentages break down. And I realize you probably only get about 50% of the municipalities donating, because some of them are small, some of them are in-kind services. You're never gonna get a donation from Maryland, you know, just not gonna happen. So the other municipalities are probably gonna have to pick up the slack on things like that, but I would really like to see if you could come back to that meeting in a week and have something to show to the group so that Kim and I can bring that back to counsel and say, hey, this is what they need, this is why they need it. That's really the question we have to answer in order to do anything for the budget.
I only have one other question. When I look at billing on here, is that invoicing or is that what you got paid?
What you got to do by insurance?
Okay, because it used to show, billing used to show what you actually billed. And I know I was at one meeting and we asked about that, and say, an $800,000 accounts receivable suddenly dropped down to basically what you have here, I think. And I'm hoping that Cornerstone can do a much better job for you. I have a little more confidence there. I was at the meetings with Cornerstone and your other previous company, hopefully.
Cornerstone's more stable than the company we had before.
Yeah.
And we're in talks with them on what we expect.
And I know it's been hard for you to get reports from them, just starting up, am I correct?
We're not having any problem right now.
Okay, good.
So they're getting reports and all the money coming in, comes in weekly instead of monthly.
Is that Rose's desire to regionalize service?
So there's, there's a lot of discussion there. I was, I did want to bring up, I expect in the next year or two, just in this area in EMS, we're gonna see a lot of kind of changes in general. So there's, there's a study coming out that has recommended that we consider merging with Glen Rock, which we're looking at and discussing internally. Wellspan is also going to put a facility right over by where they have those doctor's offices now, that will be its own standalone hospital technically.
Stonebridge. Wood Road over there by Home Depot?
That's my understanding, kind of that area, that it will be its own kind of standalone ER. So that'll, that'll certainly change kind of the nature of things around here.
You get a big difference between taking somebody there and running to York or UPMC, Wellspan. I don't know how many times, have you stopped going to Maryland hospitals?
So Maryland hospitals, it kind of depends on how deep we are into Maryland for a call. Certainly if somebody says, well, my, my brain surgeon or my pediatric heart surgeon is down at UPMC, you might not really have a great excuse to not, you know, go there for them.
Well, I have to say, you guys did a phenomenal job over COVID, my hat's off to you because I wouldn't have wanted to sit there. I used to drive ambulance for you guys, and I wouldn't want to sit there for two, two and a half hours just waiting to get into the emergency room.
Do you have any questions for us as far as what you think we need when we go to meeting the 23rd?
We'll get what you ask for. And Rose Fire Company thanks you all for your support. Your dedication is definitely appreciated, and we'll do whatever we have to do to work with you guys.
I want to point out one thing to the public while we're all here. We have a chart that we were given, disappeared, but, yeah. This big blue area here represents almost $500,000 of payroll. And this is for EMS, because now we have a paid EMS and they have what funding we've been talking about. But I want to point out that the same $500,000, if we did not have Rose as a volunteer fire department, we would be paying that out in tax dollars as a paid fire company, because that's about what it would cost to man the fire company. So that's, every time, I know whenever I walk past somebody who's a firefighter at Rose, I say thank you. And every, all the citizens should say that too, because they do a phenomenal job and saves, saves, saves the borough an awful lot of money. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for your service. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, good evening.
Good evening.
Well, it's that time, it's time for us to start getting excited. It's almost time for our annual Christmas parade. And it seems every year, it gets better and better. So this year, December 2nd is the date, and I'm sure a lot of you have probably already seen our first billboard in town, letting everybody know that it's coming. And we get a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, a lot of messages from just residents, not just here in New Freedom, but all over, talking about this parade and how nice it is in New Freedom. So we're excited about it, we want all of you guys to get excited about it and spread the word. We've seen these little cards everywhere. Everywhere you look, you'll see these little cards being handed out. I think we got 10,000 circulating all over the place. The first thing I want to say with the parade, we kind of changed up with, last year we had some comments and some suggestions, because a lot of the entrants or participants or floats or whatever you want to call them, I think we had about maybe six Santas going through. So we changed it up a bit where if you want to be in the parade, you cannot be a Santa. Okay? So that's just bottom line. I've forgotten, two calls already that don't like that idea, but we think it's the best idea. Because number one, it confuses our kids. It really confuses our small kids. And then when we're ready for the greater family, our big guy, the main guy, the center of traction to come down with Rose, who generously brings them down every year for us, there's nothing to see. They've already seen him six or seven times. Why is he there? Why is he there? So anyway, the comments were, and I just nicely acknowledge those as I am tonight, simply because you just can't do it, you know? And because we've kind of outgrown our staging area, which is a community center, I'm already at 47 entrance, and we just opened registration. The calls are coming in every day. I mean, I got calls from Maryland all over the place to come, you know, to try to be in it. So you guys should feel good about New Freedom, because I do. And this to me is a big deal. And I just love it. I love that I'm a part of it, you know, getting it going. So the fact that I say we've outgrown the community center, because if you've seen it, we're parked everywhere. And this year, I'm getting calls from other fire departments to join us as far down as Providence. So they're coming from everywhere to join in on this parade now. So we decided to just leave the community center open for fire departments. All of them got, all of you guys to stage there. And we're gonna use the same route as the Fourth of July parade, because that gives us more space to get all these tractor trailers and low boys and you name it, horses and all kinds of stuff, to get all those people staged and in. And then the other issue we had was turning when we got into the center of town, even though Southern puts up the signs, no parking and this kind of thing, people don't listen. They don't listen, and a couple of our floats were like, I'm too big, I can't turn there, there's nothing I can do. So we decided to stretch it down to Third, which is wide open, and of course, we have to live there, but we've kind of spoken with our, the residents there, so they already know, we know, we get it, no parking on Third, we got it, we gotta put our cars in our driveways, that kind of thing, so. And then it will take it down to Logan where it's more space for everybody, even the fire departments to kind of disperse, you know, on Logan, back down the front and go either out 851, wherever they need to go, need to be. Flares are printed, you'll see them in the major hubs, or we call it all around town. I mean, asking the kids again to bring their letters to Santa, that was a big one last year, they, I think I got like 40-some letters, and I personally respond to all of them for the kids. So, and then usually after the parade, it's the parade and then that's it, kind of thing. So instead of doing all the things with, because, well, True Value kind of supplied us last year with the tents and then lights and all this kind of stuff, so we all know what happened there. So instead of doing that this year, to give it out of the hot chocolate, it's been waiting for the parade and that kind of thing, we decided to do just, to do a reception after the parade at the community center. So any and everyone who wants to... So any and everyone who wants to come there afterwards for the hot chocolate and the treats and whatever else should be happening there. We're going to do it that way. Starting early morning, we have to get the confirmation, but we put a phone call in too. And I think they will help us. We're going to start early morning with breakfast with Santa at the community center. And takes occasions, I can't guarantee, but I think they're going to help us do that for the kids for breakfast. So then it just leads us into the whole day where I'm excited to say that we're going to dedicate that day as Christmas time in New Freedom. I've talked to several businesses about just lighting up their business, just doing the Christmas things, similar to like a Lifetime movie kind of thing. Graciously, a lot of them are excited. They are really excited about this thing and they will light up their businesses and, you know, go for it. And then the end of the day will be this finale, this parade. Also, the majority of the time, these last three years, my husband and I kind of like, this is our baby. So this is what we put forth, all our effort and funding and all this kind of stuff into. We do it because we love New Freedom and we want this to happen. And it's gonna happen regardless. So we do ask for sponsorships. If you want to sponsor, that's fine. But if you don't, that's fine. We're going to do it and we're going to make it happen. It's going to be great for New Freedom. This year, we're going to highlight Rose Fire Company. Because without Rose, I wouldn't be here today. As many of you know, we lost our house last year right before the parade. But standing outside watching the fire, my husband and I looked at each other and we were like, the parade has to go on. And it did, thanks to these guys. I mean, they were at our house and they put our house down. They saved our house. And, and we just can't thank them enough. And just like Andy said, when you see one of them, you should thank them for the tireless work that they do and appreciate them. So this year, that's who we're going to highlight is Rose. We're also asking for some help as far as volunteering. Because along with this expansion, we can't do it alone. So we need people hands-on to help us do things at, either at the community center, along the parade route. You know, just making sure things flow smoothly. Because all, as many of you know, that day, I'm everywhere. You know, I, I try to acknowledge all of my floats. I walk all of them and, and thank everybody for showing up. So if you have any spare time that you want to dedicate to us to help us, we would greatly appreciate it. And if anybody has any questions, comments or concerns, just give me a yell. Everybody knows how to get in touch with you. If you don't, just call around here and they'll tell you.
Myra, how's, how's your breakfast with Santa going to work and how are you going to advertise to, you know, let children or parents actually be aware of that?
Well, first thing, we have to get the confirmation from Taste Locations. So I couldn't say, I can't say anything yet. So once we get the confirmation from them, it'll be on public, um, social media and there'll be flyers posted as well. So the parents will know about that.
So you don't have to sign up ahead of time or anything like that? Just show up?
Just show up. Just show up.
You guys are here from the fire department. Don't you do a breakfast with Santa?
Uh, we do a, we have a spaghetti dinner. I'm not sure we are discussing whether we're going to continue with that this year. So, and that is on Sunday evening. We do a spaghetti dinner.
Okay, I thought you had done, done in the past, uh, breakfast with Santa.
No, we do not do the breakfast. We do the spaghetti dinner.
All right.
I, um, just to get it out of the way, I would entertain a motion to approve the parade route that Myra discussed, which would be basically starting at the community center, although you would be feeding it from back further and running down through Third Street, turning on Third Street and dispersing at Logan.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
My vote is aye.
Thank you. They, did they, did they another move the last year for the router?
Uh, Bill Foster and Jeff Fisher.
Well, I'm here for the same old thing. I've been here before. Last time I was here, uh, the council approved outdoor pickleball courts like a year and a half ago. You know, nothing's been done.
Do you actually have lines on the tennis courts now, turning, I think what, one court into two pickleball courts?
Which, which requires you bring your own net. And if you go up to Springfield, they have two tennis courts that are, that are, that are pickleball courts. They're lined up perfectly. There's no nets. They're easy to play. And unfortunately, since New Freedom does not have that availability. And even the courts here, I'm, I'm not from this area. I'm actually from Maryland, but I met Bill Foster, become good friends. And, and there's really no outdoor pickleball access. The courts here compared to Springfield, you can't even see the lines. The lines weren't painted properly, sir. And it makes it difficult to participate in a game when you can't see the lines. So I'm a novice. This is the expert. I'm just voicing the, the things that I've seen over the last year. And you have great programs. The YMCA does a tremendous job with pickleball. The community center does a great job with pickleball, but they're inside. They're not on outside.
We, we are in the process right now of putting together a survey that's going to go out to the citizens. And we are putting together a comprehensive plan for Marge Goodfellow Park. And I wouldn't doubt that one of the things that people are going to ask for would be outdoor pickleball courts.
Right. Because just, just to throw a statistic out there, did you realize that there's twenty-three point six million individuals played tennis in the US last year? However, thirty-six point five million played pickleball. So tennis is a great sport. I grew up with it. I played in high school and college. But, but pickleball seems to be the, a trend over the last five years. It's just, it's increased in popularity by eighty-five percent over ten. So it's just something that would be good for the community to have, to get people out there to exercise in a smaller fashion.
I, I appreciate your passion for the sport and yeah.
I've only been playing it since February, but, but it's just something that coming from tennis, it's a lot less wear and tear on the body when you play when you get this age, if that makes any sense.
Um, but anyway, we are doing comprehensive plans. I'm sure.
When, when is that going to be done, sir?
Uh, actually the survey, Mary Ann, I think you remember.
The survey should go out the end of the month.
Yeah, the end of the month. So it's, the survey's pretty, pretty close.
So after the survey, what, what would the next step?
Hopefully we'll be able to apply for grant money and we, we are teaming with Shrewsbury Township to make, uh, make it easier to get grant money. And so we're taking some actions to, uh, to try to get some more recreation in New Freedom and Shrewsbury Township.
So that, if you had to put that on timeline, what would that, what would that look at, look like?
I, grant process, I mean, we could be like a year, year and a half away.
Well, yeah, I mean, there's multiple steps that have to occur. So we're in the information gathering stage at this point. So the survey will go out to the residents, they'll indicate basically what amenities they would like to see at Marge Goodfellow Park and they'll rank those.
So I'm perplexed. Sorry. Okay, I apologize.
So we'll go through that process. We're working with a consultant to develop a master site plan and a feasibility study of all the amenities that are currently installed at the park and plan for whatever the survey responses are as far as the ranking. One of those options obviously in the choice of amenities they would like to see would be outdoor pickleball. So it's already on the survey and we'll factor that in. That feasibility study and master site plan, we're still a couple of months out.
I agree.
And that all has to align with the grant cycles of the state agencies. So, you know, it's not a.
I know, I know it's not quick. I realize this is a process. But, but my understanding is, like I said, I'm not in, from the community, but had been in the community because of Bill and Brenda. It appeared that it was already allocated. It was already funded a year and a half ago. So what happened, what happened?
There was no funding.
There was no funding? Okay.
We actually asked you as, as pickleball fan addicts, if you wanted to go out and raise money to help.
How much do you need? How much do you need?
Probably about four hundred thousand.
Oh, come on, to build courts?
No, no.
No, no, it's about.
Isn't that what you got?
I believe the estimate that when we had looked at the site prep and everything else, uh, for outdoor pickleball courts, it was four hundred thousand dollars.
Four courts? Four courts, that's.
That's from Watermane.
I think we need six courts. Six courts and grandstands. And I think really, you know, every time I come here, I try and get you on this. You know, I know you want the cheap rail trail show type place. And that would really help do it. Like what happened with the, the committee on, I think?
We put it on hold because of the site feasibility plan, because everything's going to get wrapped up. We don't want to do one project here. One project here, we want to get everything together and make the grant process more.
I'm going to be dead before I play, uh, play sure pickleball in these outdoor courts. I've been this, at least four years I've been in here trying to get shit to go on.
So, so let me make sure I understand. So based on your feasibility study, for four pickleball courts, it was going to cost three hundred ninety thousand dollars? I don't know what company you're using, sir. That ain't the case.
Well, you have to remember.
That ain't the case. Come on.
How much do you have courts?
Three hundred ninety thousand dollars for four courts?
One thing you have to remember, you're dealing with the municipality. You're not dealing with a private entity. We have to pay prevailing wage. We have bidding requirements.
You bid, right?
So you're talking about a normal job that's twenty-five to thirty percent more because it has to be prevailing wage and has to be.
I have a question as about.
I don't know this. I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Not to be rude to the people that are speaking, but they were here when our fire and our EMS was here asking for money. Like there's only so much money to go around.
Yeah, that's true.
And you don't live here.
No, you're right.
We, we want to keep our fire and our EMS.
No, I, 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 I hear you. I understand. I understand. I understand.
Then we do have facilities already at the community building. The Y has facilities. It's not like you can't play.
But thank you. And we will, like I said, we welcome center.
In the meantime, let me ask one more thing. In the meantime, then why don't you fix the courts that you currently have? Because they were sabotaged. You can't see the lines, sir. You, listen, you cannot see the lines. Whoever put those lines there did not do it properly. Now, I would think that that cost would be very small in conjunction to the three hundred ninety thousand dollars you're talking about. To fix the lines on the courts, we have to bring our own nets, which I'm cool with. But fix the lines? I mean, would that be too much? You could have four pickleball courts there. And also you can line them. You, you have to be able to see the lines. Precisely. Dark blue lines on, dark green. You can't see the other courts. You can't play. You can't see it. It's a.
I, I can't hear. Mary Ann, what, what'd you say again?
I'm, I'm trying to figure, so you're saying you don't like the colors?
It was, I think it was, you got sabotaged, I'm going to be honest.
I think, I think the tennis players got sabotaged because the, see, playing tennis with pickleball lines on the courts is very difficult.
Tennis has been milk and pickleball to pay their instructors the whole time.
What?
All right. Uh, next up is Ann Costello and David Moister. Thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, sir. So we're dismissed. Are we ever going to get these courts?
I think you really, you, you might want to consider going back to the townships and boroughs that you live in and ask them.
I live in this borough.
Bill, Bill, what they said was we are in the process of getting pickleball courts hopefully put into the park. We're going through a feasibility study right now, which is going to take time. We have to talk to the community and make sure what they want in the park. And the hope is to get pickleball courts in there. Okay, they're not going to be put in tomorrow. They will come. But you have to go through the process and we have to get the grant to do this.
It was like a honeymoon the last time I was here. Suzie Blake came in and talked to you and she said, oh yes, we agree, we agree. We see that it's ver- a burgeoning enterprise and.
I was at that meeting. They, they agreed to put the lines on the tennis courts.
And I'm complaining about the color of them. I mean, it's like.
You can't see, uh, you cannot play on courts where you can't see lines.
Bill, can I get your address?
You do. And you know what? People that play pickleball who really care about the sport, want to play it right here in town. By Bailey Avenue. End doors.
Don't they have lots of basketball?
And lines magically appeared on the basketball court, so they're available there too.
In the middle of the basketball court?
I don't know. They magically appeared.
I heard they almost got rolled the last time they tried to use them.
I didn't, I didn't know how they got there. Nobody seems to know.
Well, I do. I know. That was a long, long time ago.
How did they get there?
You want me to name names? What would it be?
All right. Why, why don't we move on because I think, I think we've answered your question.
Can I ask one more question then?
Sure. How, when you get the survey, I think, you know, make sure you have enough people that put pickleball and tell them the survey's coming. And then we'll be, we'll be able to take the next step.
Could you put on the ballot? Could this be a ballot issue?
It's not a referendum issue.
Why not?
Because you, you don't legislate pickleball.
You legislate capital expenditures.
Again, thank you.
Okay, Ken, all right, one more, one more. Can we put a pickleball person on the committee for this, this time? Because last time I was here, it was being argued that maybe we should have double pickleball court or single pickleball court. There's no such thing as single pickleball court. Somebody knows pickleball needs to be in on this.
Well, there, I, I think you're confusing. There is no, there's still a pickleball committee, but their job was to investigate the feasibility of pickleball court at Marge Goodfellow Park. They reported back to council that it had been collected. That in turn led to a authorization for an expenditure to work with a consultant for a master site plan and feasibility study to understand what New Freedom as a whole would like to see in Marge Goodfellow Park, not individualized areas. We want to see what's good for the community, not just certain sports. So that's, that's the next step.
And this council is spending like thirty thousand dollars on a study in the hopes that that study will bring us a quarter of a million dollars in grant money. So that's, you know, we, we're making a commitment to recreation in New Freedom and we're, we're trying to go forward with the grants. But it is a step-by-step process and you have to check all the boxes and you get, you don't get there, it's not a straight line. It's a very jagged line. But thank you. I really appreciate you being, but I really do. I'm not, I am pro pickleball. I think it's a good exercise for a lot of different people and.
And it's also, you know, this is getting to be younger people. The average, the average age of all is thirty-five years a day. So it's beyond us, old folks. It's, it's a young man's sport, a young lady's sport.
Thanks again. Ann and David?
It's really harsh to call it Christmas and pickleball.
And I, um, for the record, I really do love New Freedom. This is not going to be as pleasant as, um, as I'm sure you know, as pickleball on Christmas, but we love this place and.
You thought pickleball was a must.
I have no words, but I have a lot of other words. All right. Good evening, Mayor Butcher, Borough Council, Council President Bobby, Borough Manager Schaefer and Mr. Jones. I believe that you already know why I'm here. And although I don't actually feel the need to have to repeat myself, I'm guessing that some of you have either forgotten or have not been kept informed by the borough. Or maybe it's that I fail to complain enough as one of you in this room called my council recently. Here's some deja vu for you for those of you who have forgotten maybe. Jar of roaches, fresh one. It has been eighteen long and torturous months of dealing with the neighbors' out-of-control roach infestation. The roaches have multiplied exponentially between the time the borough received the very first complaints about this in the spring and summer of 2022. So now, I really am tired of explaining myself and bringing this problem to your attention. But I'm really here to say two things tonight. The first has to do with the aforementioned about my amount of, uh, or lack thereof of complaining, which isn't actually true. But I thought you ought to know why. A quick review. Here are the bullet points. A quick review, here are the bullet points. The borough first started hearing from me in the spring of 2022. It wasn't until about the summer of 2022 that I was told that I had to fill out a complaint form. So I did, as did several of my neighbors. Once some more time passed, um, by after several forms were submitted, we were informed by the borough that the roach infested neighbors would have 60 days in which to remedy their situation. Otherwise, we'd go to the district magistrate. We received subpoenas for court, 20 or so more days go by before, um, we actually can see the judge. We see the judge. But we get to court. It's like 15 property owners against two people. The borough shows up a few minutes before court and we're completely unprepared. It should be noted that no one had reached out to any of the complainants in the days leading up to the case. In fact, we had to catch the borough and zoning official up to the details, on the details of the problem right before court, the court case started. And we'd dispute quickly and get into court on time. And of course, we all know that that case was an absolute abomination. And I'm not going to get into that now. And then I, then I started asking the borough about the next steps once that ridiculous case was over. I had come to speak to you all while trying simultaneously to start the supposed 60 days all over again by lodging freshly written complaints for the same issue. Without any legal reason or even general explanation whatsoever, we are told that the borough will not be handling roach problem. What? The borough will not be handling the roach problem. Instead, I'm encouraged to document and keep my complaints focused on my neighbor's garbage problem. And the borough was willing to handle that part. So at that point, you start hearing from me less because I'm told that you won't be handling it. So I do as I'm told. Meanwhile, the borough apparently asked the roach tenants for proof of professional pest control service. So I do appreciate that. However, those services unfortunately only occurred a handful of times. The last one on March 27th of this year. So fast forward to now, our problem is worse than ever. And this leads me to the second point that I wanted to bring up to you tonight. But it's more of a question. What exactly, what exactly happens when you all go back into the dark room, notice the executive sessions? Why is it that we have been told one thing in public or in private only to have the exact opposite thing happen with not so much as an explanation, much less a legal reason why? Who exactly is making these mysterious decisions and deciding such things as we won't be handling the roaches? Like some omniscient parental figure who hits his or her gavel down at the borough's desk and decides that the borough will or will not do something? And then emerges with a final say without citing any ordinance or even casual reasons why? People start paying attention to local politics for all types of reasons. But usually it first starts with something very personal that is affecting them. Then sometimes those people start paying attention to the itty bitty details of the goings on in local politics. And before you know it, all types of things become head scratchers. As I said at the beginning, I don't want to be here. I don't even want to know you. Trust me when I say this. I covered politics for over a decade as an investigative reporter. And when I moved here to my beautiful Lumenta Street Road home that I've owned for over eight years, a little over a year and a half ago is when we moved in, I had no interest in reporting, much less paying attention to local politics ever again. I had exhausted myself paying attention to Baltimore County and Maryland state politics for all types of reasons. But now that my suffering has reached a new level that no one should ever have to endure, you have my attention. I am paying attention. And I have a lot of questions beyond what my personal and torturous issue in, um, which is why I'm here today and why you've been hearing from me since, you know, the last year. I will say this in closing. Like your constituents, you yourselves got into politics for a variety of reasons. I would hope that those reasons include serving the public that put you in your positions in the first place. So when you go back into your little dark room tonight and have your private conversations, I implore you to remember something. And that is the reason why you are here. And I would ask that you start questioning whomever it is who is moving you into the opposite directions of what you say you plan to do and what is best for your constituents. But even if and when things have to go in a different direction, then, then what the public, even me, wants or needs, please stop being so mysterious about it with your rulings and other things, like this strange contract sent to me by someone in the public who's been reading my new blog within days. I think it was the next day. Put up my blog, now the, the public has their concerns about, there are some other concerns. Apparently this contract, which you didn't have any printouts, but I had, I, I downloaded this morning or looked on your website, is buried somewhere on page 10. What's also important is how the public is served. Apparently this contract is important. But what's also important is how the public is served. Not just this, I don't know what it is, page 10 contract. After all the suffering I have gone through over the last year and a half, I would like a sweetheart deal too. What I would love is you could assist me and the rest of my neighbors in ending this private nuisance roach infestation that we have going on next door. I want you to make that as important as whatever in this contract that I don't actually know all that much about and I'm not bringing up any personnel matters in this meeting. But why is that important? Why is my issue not important? Why is my suffering not important? I have had absolutely enough. And I know you have seen. I know that you know what I'm talking about.
I just figured it out.
Yeah.
And I had no idea what you were talking about.
Okay, that's, that's.
I will point out to you, we have never had an executive session on roaches.
I know that's not true. I'm not going to embarrass you, but I know you've seen it.
Seen what?
So, so you know exactly what I'm talking about. What, the roach infestation?
I truly don't know what you mean about a 10-page.
That's rich. Okay, well, that's all I have to say. I'm going to go on, on to him.
About $3,000 a couple nights at a hotel because we had to place guests. We had neighbors that just didn't care. The, the, the property owners who were running it out didn't care. The tenants who were sick didn't care. I've, I've been around the world twice in both directions. I can tell you right now, I've never seen anything more disgusting than our neighbors, how they were living inside that house. For the solicitor, Mr. Schaefer over here. I sent you some pictures one day and you said, I'm going to get the solicitor to see how we can, the solicitor to see how we can handle this. That was, uh, October?
Two weeks ago.
Yeah. Been over a year and a half. A year and a half. I challenge you, come on over my house, it's been a while. Well, make sure you stay safe. I'm going to tell you, it's bad, it's really bad. And the fact that nobody's in there right now and they're bombing is making it even worse now. We've had that place, we've had a, a pest control company out there religiously, sometimes once a week. But it's never been, we've always had to do it at least once a month at, at the bare minimum.
All the units, except for that one. All the units have been treating the entire time, except for the common denominator.
You called the state health department. That refers to the county health department. County health department refers it to you guys. And somehow in between, USDA got brought into it because it could be a, if it was a restaurant, the USDA would come and shut them down. I have never seen anything so disgusting in my life. And it's in plain sight. You know where, do you know where Lumenta Street's at?
I do, although I'm not the usual solicitor.
Why not?
I'm filling in for Dave tonight.
Okay. I, I challenge you to go up there and take a look at it yourself. Ask the people who own the property if you can go in and take a look at it. Please, do it. I've been having seizures for the last year. I can probably tell you where it's from. And it's probably from all those chemicals that they used inside the place to clean it up. Not clean it up, but as insecticides to kill the roaches. This is disgusting. I can't even believe that you got, I'm, I'm talking to the solicitor about, about how they go about handling the issue? It's been a year and a half to handle the issue.
I, you, when you came the last time, I told you that my heart bled for you and it still does. I have called the health department as well. I've called as many places I can and I just recently copied you on the, the letter that I sent to, to the state. The problem that you have is that roaches are not something, I mean, this borough can't, can't take care of a roach problem for you. We have a fiduciary, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens. If somebody came in, if Ray came in and said, I've got a problem with ants, well, we can't do that. That's not something that we do. We take care of problems in general in the community. But you have a specific problem in your dwelling. And this is something that has to be taken care of in your dwelling by you. The state isn't going to do anything, the borough can't do anything. There's really very little that we can do. Let me ask you this, and it's a serious question. What would you want us to do?
Enforce the regulations. You guys said you were going to do that earlier.
The only regulation.
Make sure they are spraying, picking up the trash, cleaning the place up.
The only regulation we have is for, is for garbage.
Not making us babysit the complaints and take photos of you when we are halfway, half a mile from your, from this building where your borough people are. We have to do all the work. And by the way, if what you're saying is true, then what's up with the 60 days? What was the point of us getting all together, all the, you know, everybody in my community, you know, writing these complaints, waiting for these 60 days to pass by so we can go to court in front of Judge Sweeney, who by the way, is not saying what you said. What she said is you guys took the wrong people to court. She did not say that it was not within some jurisdiction for you guys to have taken them to court. So that is absolutely not, well, either that or you and, you and the, the judge magistrate disagree.
The tenant, the tenant represented herself as the owner.
Okay, that's different than what you just told me. What you just told me is that there's nothing you can do.
No, no, no. What we can do is the garbage. We can't do anything about the roaches.
Then why? What, we went to court?
There has to be something in an ordinance. This is absolutely embarrassing that it has been going on since June of 22. It wasn't handled properly to begin with. There has to be something. We should have a competent solicitor that could look at the ordinance. This is a health and safety issue. Something should be done about.
Problem is, is the health department does not consider the health and safety issue.
Well, if it's on a restaurant then.
No. They, they said it was your responsibility. The health department said it was your respons, it said the borough's responsibility. We called again today to make sure we heard that correctly. They said, because everybody's calling apparently you guys, or some people are calling you guys, and the health department based on this issue. And they said it was the borough's responsibility.
County, state, and USDA said it's on y'all.
My understanding is, and I talked to Attorney Jones about this this morning, um, is that the, the tenant, the terrible neighbor tenant was gone about two weeks ago and since then, they have been cleaning up the property and it has been being treated. Is that correct? Do you know?
That's debatable. They have been there to burn the trash and pull, um, like cabinets out and like drawers out and burn that. They've been there for a few hours. Of course, I'm not in there, I cannot see. I saw one person, I think it was Friday, come, not a professional, but spray. So there was some kind of spraying going on on Friday, but let me tell you something, this is not their priority. They let a week, you know, the tenants moved out on October 2nd. I heard that the, you know, on the day of the lease or something, the next day, they could have come. Did they come? No. You know why? It's not their priority. They don't have to live this. Days go by, then they come for a couple hours, throw some garbage out, you know, the front, you know, the waste people come. Huge mountain of gar, of garbage. Um, and then days go by, nothing, nothing, nothing. But you can see roaches in the windows from my, from my porch, you know, my back swing. I just sit there, you could come over right now, you could come over tomorrow morning. Roaches crawling inside the windows between their blinds, right? It is not their priority. The other thing you guys talked, we talked about when we were here, you know, however long ago, is condemnation. And it's like the amnesia. That place needs to, I don't want it. I don't want to, I don't want it for New Freedom. I don't want it for my street. I don't want to live next to a condemned home. But I would rather live next to a condemned home than live next to the conditions I'm living in right now. So there are a lot of things that were discussed that day that just sort of fizzled and disappeared. And I don't understand why. I even came up with this solution, you know, just help us out, please. I mean, because you guys messed up the whole court thing, right? Wasted a whole bunch of time, made the situation, situation so much worse. Hey, can you just help us out? Maybe you could like help fumigate all six of us and we can just knock this out. And we left that meeting feeling hopeful. And while you don't dole out money to private citizens, I understand that you screwed up though. And I asked you to help fix it. And we left here hopeful and we heard nothing about that, about that again, ever. Like, it was like we never discussed it. And that's what I mean. Whatever happens, when you guys go where you go, when you discuss these things, I don't know what kind of guidance you're getting. But whatever it is, you need to be more transparent with the people about what happens. You screwed up bad, real bad. And it has affected my life profoundly, financially, psychologically, emotionally. I can't have my kids over. I told you all this last year. I told you all this last year and I gave you a solution and an idea. You screwed up. Can you just help us fix it? It, it would have cost you 400, it would have cost you $2,400 to fumigate all of us. And now I'll ask you again, can you do it? Because now the tenant, and would you call him disgusting tenant? I think that's the word you used. Because a disgusting tenant is gone, it probably would actually work. Can you please do something? And don't tell me, yes, 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 and then never let it fizzle. Do something, tell me if you're going to do it or not. And, and then, and then we'll move on to what else, what else we need to do. You screwed up bad, real bad, and you need to help fix it.
You think he's saying that, but I don't, I, you know, was it a problem? Yes. Was, was the fact that we served the wrong person, did that create a huge, long chain of events? No.
You, you led me to believe that, that there was such a, like, first of all, you're telling me two different things here, so I need to get real straight. First, you're telling me that there's nothing the borough can do. But then I'm led to, you know, before that, I'm led to believe there's this whole 60-day process that we can go through. We can all get together, we can get off. Right. No, that's not what happened because actually, Andrew will remember, I wanted to bring up the trash during the court case in the two minutes we had to talk before, before court. I was not allowed to bring information about the trash up because we were there only for the roaches. So that's baloney. That's not true. We went there, we talked about roaches. That's what we talked about. There are a whole bunch of people in that room. That can tell you that. Judge Sweeney was there. We all, we were, that was about roaches. It was not about trash. I wanted to talk, to talk about trash. And I was told, you can't talk about trash. Not only that, I had to take my notes and put them in the car because I had things I wanted to talk about that included trash and like this whole thing, but I wasn't even allowed to have my paper notes in the courtroom. All I was allowed to talk about were the roaches. So that's baloney. So you led me to believe, my community.
I, I was not at the court.
Okay. Well, no, I'm just letting you know. It was not about trash. It was about roaches. And Judge, Judge Sweeney didn't say this is not within the borough's. It was, what she said was you brought the wrong people to court, is what she said. And it was an abomination. And don't tell me it's different, Andrew.
And it's difficult, or if you're going to talk about what she said, and it's difficult to prove that the infestation is only at one property and originated there.
And she said, you should have brought an attorney. She said, where's your solicitor? Why don't you bring your legal counsel?
Nothing to do with what I said.
She said, and no, and she said, you guys need an expert. But the over, I know, I know what you're talking about, the overarching decision that she made. And I have 15 people that watched it go down, was that you guys took the wrong person to court. And you, the one thing I really appreciated is you disagreed with her. And you let her know. You let her know it. So no, it wasn't thrown out because of that. It was mentioned, but she also said, if this comes back around, right? Which means roaches are not out of the question, but come back around in front of the, the magistrate. So why haven't you done it? Why did you leave me to believe that you would? Why'd you tell me, we can't handle roaches? That's not true.
You came back and the council provided directions.
And the directions were to take photos of the garbage, right? But, but you were not, we are not going to handle the roaches, which you just underscored a lot of good stuff there.
A lot of, a lot of everything that you're presenting tonight has to do with what has occurred in the past, so.
Oh, God.
No kidding.
We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for this past.
Well, if you'd let me finish. We're talking about the situation as it exists at this point. The tenant is gone, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The owner has been visiting the property.
Twice.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Has been cleaning the garbage out that was left by the tenant that in all evidence was probably providing some kind of harborage for the roaches, correct?
You mean feeding them? Yes, sure.
Sure, okay. So tenant is gone, that situation's removed, the garbage is being removed, the house is being treated, which you did indicate...
Oh, come on. Andrew, come on.
It's not ongoing on the last year, though.
Just come on, no.
I'm getting somewhere through another year.
If things were allowed... No.
Okay, we're talking about now.
No. You want to talk about now. I want to talk about the whole context. And here we are because of the whole context, not just because of the last three days.
So we're talking about the whole context. You said everyone on that block is treating. So why do we have a voicemail from October 2nd from 113 Winetta Street who's saying he does not have a problem with roaches? He is not treating. He's tired of people trespassing, damaging his property.
113?
Yes.
I don't know what to say. He's not treating, that's news to me because we've seen him treat. So you're very prepared for this, Mr. Schaefer. That's great. You know what? You and I, we can talk about this. You can throw me under the bus, you can do whatever the hell you want to do. I want help with this situation. I'm not going to allow you to pick me apart here. I suffer enough. Every single day I suffer.
That's why I'm trying to say we can go through this.
Then if that's the case...
And we can come up with a solution tonight.
I gave you a solution.
We should have a freaking solution.
I gave you a solution. You screwed up. Fumigate us all, please.
Okay. You need to talk to the council members then.
Before summer, Solicitor Jones says if the roaches come back, he has a solution for it. What was that solution?
I'm unaware of that discussion. I don't know that at all.
I don't know what that solution was.
We were all sitting right here when he said it, and I know you have communication with him, so you never talked about what his solution was?
No, other than what was discussed at that time was to contact the Health Department, to contact the Child Protective Services.
No, I'm not talking back in November, December when they originally came here. I'm talking before this past summer. It was probably May-ish timeframe. He sat there and said he has a solution if they come back and they get bad this summer. But then the next thing I heard was, not our problem. Well, what was his solution and why is it not the problem?
Was it part of the problem if we decide to fumigate that whole block? Anytime somebody else has roaches, we're going to be responsible for every house in this alley.
Extrapolate this out to New Freedom. Go ahead and extrapolate this out. You have 15 homes now, just keep extrapolating this out.
No, I'm with them. They know I am. You know, I've passed on pictures to you of garbage and stuff and signs and everything else. And I wish I had the answer, but there should be an answer. There should have been an answer a long time ago. I certainly wouldn't, and nobody sitting on this council would live in those conditions. I've been to your house. I know what you're going through.
And it is so much worse than when you were there. I'm not, you know, sometimes I think you think I'm exaggerating by using the words hundreds, dozens, thousands. I am not exaggerating, and I never have. I never have.
There are tens of thousands.
Tens of thousands. In my situation, like, this is like nothing. I mean, we're doing as the best we can. We keep our house clean. I can't tell you how many times I have to... I'm always in a state of packing and unpacking, right? Got to put stuff away, got to throw stuff away, that they're coming. You know, I can't settle in any room in my house because there's always something going on. But so we're doing the best that we can. We are right next door. We are the frontline. It's vacant because it's being worked on, right? Then there's the disgusting tenant, to use your words, that just moved out. Then there's us, then it's vacant, and then there's two people down. And the further you get away to the right, the fewer that you have. So the guy that gave you call the other day who claims he doesn't have roaches, his house has been vacant since February, just FYI.
Correct.
Right.
Right. Didn't they travel across the street?
Yes, they have. In fact, two weeks ago, I saw, that's all I'm going to say. Yes, they have traveled across the street. Not trying to throw anybody, you know, not trying to... You know, I'm at the point where I don't even care if I anger my neighbors. Winetta roach, I mean, come on now. I'm so desperate and so frustrated and so disgusted with more than just the roaches and the disgusting neighbor situation that, you know, gloves are off. I'll do anything I can to get some relief.
I know we're only talking about roaches here. I remember the wisteria bush that was out front that the城管 enforcement sent him a letter said has to be gone. Right?
It's growing back in the...
It's still back.
It's still there. Still there.
Yep.
Didn't you do some work and have to look under the porch and there were new vines?
It is growing under my porch. Well, it does. We have to kill the trees. So what happens? Which, this is like, so, like, the least of the problems now. We originally came forward because that, the same owner, the owners, they don't care about the property, right? So they have this big wisteria, dead branches going up, you know, on the roof and under the roof and going into this light fixture. There was a fire a few months before where that wisteria got into somebody's air conditioner at 119. I have pictures. And it caused a fire on the carpet on the upstairs. So here I am, I'm about to move in, right? I just renovated, and I'm watching, I'm looking at dead branches going up this... It's where the porch light is. And that's when we first met because I was very concerned about that. It's never been aesthetic. But anyway, back to your point. So the way, this is an invasive issue, you know, species, and we've... I have no words because you already know. It grows under the porches, and it, so the vines will go all the way across, but also grow new trees. The roots get in, grows up a new tree. Roots get in, grow up a new tree. I've killed two trees under any of my porch, and it's not my wisteria. So anyway, that's just a symptom of the larger problem. The larger problem is there's owners there that just don't care.
Well...
Is that something that we can take care of? Can we send in another...
This council said when it was cut off at the ground, it was satisfied, that the code was satisfied. And I said, no, they need to remove it. And the council said, no, it was satisfied. And then, at the end, they said you would send a letter out to have it finally removed. So I don't know if they finally removed it, but it should.
No, it's there. It's growing new shoots.
And we have a rental ordinance in here this evening that hopefully this council will address so we can get a rental ordinance, which we already have. There has to be ordinances that are already in place to deal with something such as this because this is absolutely over the top. It just needs to be enforced. Enforce the ordinances you have already.
Thank you very much. And if you're not going to enforce them?
Get rid of them.
And that's another reason I think we, and I brought it up, that we need some type of rental ordinance.
Rental ordinance.
You know, I mean, this doesn't really have anything to do with their problem right now, but a rental ordinance would not have addressed this issue.
Flodrock insects is in the ordinance, absolutely. It is rodents and insects. It is in there. I read it.
And you know what? I haven't read that. I've been too busy finding my own problem, but I will say this. And if that doesn't directly impact this situation with me right now, I hope you do put something in place that, so that nobody in my position, who's an owner occupant, right, who lives next to, you know, tenants or whatever, I hope nobody in New Freedom ever has to go through what I'm going through, ever. So I hope you pass that. If you can protect owner occupants...
But what if it was one of your neighbors who owned their property and they had the same amount of trash? That ordinance doesn't do anything.
So I guess you shouldn't have done anything to that.
So it's going to go in the backyard.
Not the regular ordinance.
Regular ordinance considers trash. It considers trash, but it doesn't give you the right to go into somebody's property.
No, but quit putting the hyperbole of going into people's property. You always do that.
Ordinance.
You always go to the hyperbole of trespassing and going in properties. Just stop that, please. There are ordinances that are in the book that aren't enforced to get you to the situation that you're currently in now. That's all I'm saying.
I hope y'all figure out something real soon because this is getting pretty bad. I thought it was bad in Arkansas. They got nothing on y'all.
I would entertain a motion to fumigate the block.
Yes. Can I say something?
Sure.
What about the 144-3, removal or abatement of nuisances? Unlawful nuisances. It shall be unlawful for any person to create, continue, cause, maintain, or permit to exist any nuisance at any place within the borough. This is a nuisance.
I think the problem was we could not prove where the situation started according to our solicitor. And according to other attorneys in town, which I contacted as well, it's really difficult. I mean, one of the attorneys said unless you paint their legs red with fingernail polish, how do you know where the roach came from? I'm not saying that it came from here, don't even go there.
For the first six months, you knew where it came from, and all of a sudden you didn't know.
Well, we...
For the first six months or so.
I'll tell you what, this is stupid.
Why did you call CPS then? Why did you call the Health Department then? Why did you just call them disgusting neighbors? Why did you lead me to believe that the district magistrate could handle it? If what you just said is true, why did all those things happen?
To try to help you.
Because we were trying.
Some of it, we were really trying to help.
Right. The point is, if the ordinance of the problem, if you didn't think the origin of the problem was where it is, then why did you entertain all those avenues? Pick a side, pick a, I mean, pick one.
No, no, no. That's not what happened. What happened was, I asked the question, and the answer was, you don't know where they came... And my response was, well, you're right, I guess. I really don't know.
All right, go look through the window.
All right. To answer your question on whether you know where the roaches came from or not, I've lived at 109 since 2009, 2008. Never had any roach problems since then. Up until 117 left that area, which the owners, the homeowners of 117 now live in Glenville, which Glenville has taken said owners to court for the condition of their homes. In Glenville, what makes you think that they give a crack about the house that they have over here? And they let us, who live on 109, deal with their problem being that you guys have not handled any of those situations? And, before you answer any of this, and there are said bylaws, which I have read, which I have used to my benefit from when I had a previous neighbor. You guys are doing nothing to enforce those laws. If you were to go down and inspect said property, you would see the violations of said laws, that bylaws that you all have established, and for you all to, that I've heard you guys say here that you were not aware of the situation unless you were not elected into office since, what, December of last year? If you were elected, you should have knowledge of this. It's self-education, lead by example, prior military also. I'd rather live, I'd rather burn my house down. Don't get your hopes up there, fireflies. I'd rather burn my house down than live with all the roaches and everything that Ann has to deal with. I've sat in her backyard, and I've counted, I've sprayed. I work in a wholesale greenhouse. I have access to certain sprays and stuff that I've been spraying around my house. I'm to the point to where I cannot control them with the stuff we have available at a commercial greenhouse that I am now forced to hire a company to come in and spray and treat my home along with what Ann is doing, what my neighbor Chad is doing, what Steve at the end is doing. Everybody is doing something except for the vacant houses.
I have one point I would like to...
You all have failed the community. You are all elected officials to serve us, not the other way around. What are you going to do to take care of said situation? My suggestion to you all is, first, take a walk down. Inspect 117 Winetta. Hell, go in, inspect my house.
Come in, you're welcome for dinner.
And go from there.
Want to eat dinner at my house? I'm a cook, I'm a chef. I can't do that anymore as much as I'd like to now.
I believe there is a motion on the floor to fumigate all six.
Before you do that motion, I have one thing to say.
This is exactly what you were asking for.
Okay, yes, it is, and I'm sorry. There's one thing I wanted to address before you, and I apologize, and I thank you for respecting my passion here. Andrew, Mr. Schaefer, you brought up, I just remembered when Jose was talking. So you brought up 113, right? So 113, all of a sudden, we'll talk about 113, Winetta Street, right? So he lost his tenant in February. He has been spraying. We were all talking about it. He has talked about it. He's talked about it. About a month and a half ago, maybe two months, I was sitting out on my porch. He's been actively trying to rent out his unit, and you have to understand, he has a financial interest in this. He doesn't want to have roaches, right? He has roaches, for sure. First of all, I can see them on his porch, and I can see them go underneath the back of my patio into his, right? He has a financial interest in this, and he's a little pissed off at us because we're preventing him from, you know, being able to rent out his property. Just for the one second. So I'm sitting on my porch, a month and a half, about a month and a half ago, and this little family comes up, the little girl, little like three-year-old girl. She's playing with my puppy Gemma, right? And they're like, you know, we're looking at this, you know, 113, and we're wondering, it looks like a wonderful neighborhood, you know, how do you like it here? And I said, it's wonderful. We have the best neighbors ever. I mean, it is. If we're not for this roach situation, it's absolutely perfect. Love it. Love the whole block for a variety of reasons, right? So they say to me, how do you like it? I say, I really like it except for one reason. The roach infestation that we're dealing with. And they're like, what roach infestation? I said, Ron didn't tell you? They're like, no. And I said, well, I'm sorry, but that's, I have one, I can't speak for, we have one. 109 has one, 111 has one. You know, the guy on the other, you know, our neighbor definitely has them, you know, so, you know, and they didn't rent. And he's pissed. He's very angry at me. So you need to understand the motivation there. So that's all I wanted to say. And with that, go on with your motion.
Do you have a, do we have any kind of an estimate on what it would cost to tent and fumigate the whole set of our houses?
I got you an estimate for something else, but we are at the point now where we need, we need a whole tent at this point. What I had gotten you the next week after you asked me that same question last year was, and I wouldn't, it was like $450 or $400 a unit, which is six, you know, there's six units. We are beyond that now. Things are far worse. It does need a tent, and I don't have an answer to that question.
Whole sides of the street.
It's, that's what I had asked for. I will leave that up to the other side at this point, but without a doubt, my side of the street. But you're right. But without a doubt, my side of the street, but you're right. You know, you also have, yeah, without, without a doubt, our side. So, but if you can only do one, you're doing, my side is a side I obviously need.
Well, just to do one side if, well, they don't have it, either they're just going to come back to your side.
Yes. And then down Berkin team, which they should be scared, very, very scared.
Are they in Berkin team?
No.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know. I don't know, I'm just saying, if they cross the street, then they go in the backyard. You know, there are people.
We're speculating right now.
No. Well, yes, we're specu, yeah, I have no idea about Berkin team, but I can tell you, I'm not speculating that they've crossed the street. I'm not speculating that they went to the standalone, like, country house that's on that side and that they've, you know, reached over, like, that I'm not spec, I'm not speculating that I've actually seen them cross the street and going a course across the street. So no, I, I can't tell you what happens after that, after it gets even worse than now with other people. So you're right.
What you're talking about is detached, separate home. It's not really even that close.
It has reached, it has reached a detached home. That's, the people have owned that home for 22 years.
This really needs us to be assessed. We need to find out where they are, because it's doing your robe.
I would like to watch you have a vote on tent. If that's what you can do, if that's your solution, I'm all for it. I, oh, yeah, I'm all for it. I need relief, and I need it now. I cannot wait anymore. I can't wait on their timeline, the neighbor's timeline.
Discussion, if a motion was made to exterminate the entire block, assuming that, that needs to be a cooperative effort? Does that need to be lit by the borough and paid for? I'm trying to understand, we need to get, obviously, we can't go in and fumigate your property without permission from each property.
You'll get it.
I understand, I'm just trying to walk through the process.
Will we get it from 117 now?
Well, wouldn't that be interesting if they'd be resistant to that? Because that happened too. We offered to fumigate, or one of the neighbors offered to pay for the fumigation.
I think the motion would need to be, because the borough can't just write a check card blush for any amount of how much it costs without knowing how much it's going to cost. So I think a proper motion would have to be to have an expert or exterminator, whoever, come in this week, look at the property, and then get quotes from, depending on how much it's going to be, you probably can need at least three quotes. Because if it's over a certain threshold amount, you'll have to.
We're not going to be able to do that.
Should it be less than $10,000?
Yeah.
But if it's not, not to exceed.
Yeah, so you'll have to get quotes, and then once you have the quotes.
I'll second the motion, seeing that we need that for, to be able to discuss anything.
Tim, what Andrew was saying, if we need, or the exterminator needs access to all the units, and we have a unit that we can't get access to, without that, it's not going to be successful.
It has to be all.
How do you, legally, how do we access a unit that, if the owner doesn't want it to operate, the order's not available, whatever happens to be, how do we do that so that we're on sound footing to get this done and not treat five of the six units, let's say, and then the sixth one doesn't get treated and we're right back to where we were? The problem doesn't get fixed. We have to do the both at the same time, so how do you access a unit for somebody that doesn't? Assuming they don't want, I don't know, would they cooperate? Would they, do they want, the owner wants it?
Like I said, it was offered to them this past, a week ago. We got, we have, we've moved up to gassing now. We now have to have our house gassed and we have to spend the night in a hotel.
What was their response when you talked to them?
It was, when, it was, so we're all working together, the three of us, right? It was the owner that is renovating the house on the other side. We did the works, right? We've got 119, we've got the disgusting tenant, and then we've got us. And so 119 and us are totally working together. Like we do our, we do the treatments at the same time we moved on to this company. They offered to pay, to have them fumigated. I offered quietly to pay half to 119 because I didn't want 117 to know because I'm taking 117 to court, okay? And 117 said, the first response was, I don't know, I'll think about it, I'm busy. And the second response was, no. They refused free money. They refused an opportunity, which is a waste of time, to have gassed our places because we push them there and then they come right back. And so, to answer your question, I don't know what they're thinking, but it's worth a shot.
I will take care of Austin, getting that communicated to them that they need, that it needs to be agreed up.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I know, I don't want to threaten people, but, I mean, legitimately, you could say you're at risk, that your property could be condemned and then fumigated.
And it should be. It's not, that's not even, that's not even reaching.
Are they gutting the house now? I know you said he was throwing out drawers and different things.
I have no idea.
But the person you're talking to is the owner.
Yes.
You're sure it's the owner.
So, okay, well, here's the thing. This is the funny little thing. So there's Melissa McCleary Hensel, who, name is on the title. And there's Tom Hensel that wants to do all the, who's her husband, who wants to do all the communicating about it. So, it was Tom Hensel that said no.
Is he on the deed?
I just told you, no. His wife is on the deed, but he buffers his wife from communicating about this as the owner. He presents himself as the owner. So technically, I mean, well, they're married.
I've had no communication with Tom. My only communication has been with Melissa the last two years.
Okay, I find her probably to be far more reasonable than Tom.
That's why I said, let me take care of.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that she would probably be amenable. Especially given what she's probably figured out. Well, she has figured out now, that things are so much worse than she thought they were.
Okay, I will make the motion that we.
We're, we're, I'm being seconded.
Well, we have to add something to it.
Go ahead, you have to amend it.
All right. Who made the motion?
You did.
You did.
You did. Oh, okay, then I will amend my motion. Okay, I'm amending the motion to going out, asking the borough manager to go out and get a quote for tenting the block, the row houses, and doing a complete extermination. Coordinate with the owners to make sure we have authorization to enter the premises and not to exceed $1,000.
I'll keep my second.
So I'll second it again, I mean, that.
We have three seconds. Do we have any other discussion?
Yeah, it was mentioned that we took the wrong people to court. I don't believe.
That no longer applies, it no longer applies.
It no longer applies, but you brought it up. I want to make sure that people have the right information, including myself.
Yes.
So the borough served papers, correct? Well, the borough didn't serve papers, the borough filed paperwork. The.
Constable.
The constable served the papers to somebody who then fraudulently signed.
Yep, you got it.
Somebody else's name.
But it doesn't even matter because the wrong person, even though she fraudulently signed it, was still taken to court. The tenant apparently was the one that was, should have been taken to court and not the homeowner or the landlord. The reason it no longer applies is because the house is vacant. So it falls, right?
It's vacant now, but it wasn't at the time, correct?
Exactly. So, there's no, there wasn't, there wasn't, in my, in my view, any ambiguity about it, but whatever. But right now.
Then who showed up at court, the tenant or the owner?
Both.
Both?
Yep, and, yes, so, anyway.
And all the neighbors that were subpoenaed, correct?
Yes.
And it is my understanding that Judge Sweeney looked at the IPC and determined that the wrong person was served. I was told those words, so.
We believe you heard me.
Right, and the occupant was not the.
Signed for the actual letter.
And I agree.
Signed for the letter and forged it and.
And I agree with the way you handled that, absolutely. That was hard to do. You really put yourself in a spot when you did that. But you were right, so, I, in my opinion.
I'll call the question.
My motion and a second.
Two thirds.
Just to call the question.
Is there any further discussion? I'll call the question. Call the favor.
Aye.
Aye. Pouse, my vote is aye.
Thank you.
So we, do, do we know from what you're saying, that the owner is, the lady is the name, on the deed is the owner.
Yes.
Her husband is not on the deed.
Exactly.
But he's speaking for.
He's the only one, he, in fact, he called my attorney and swore him up and down and said, don't contact me again. Like he wants to be the spokesperson for the property, but he's not on the deed.
I just don't want to have a problem because, oh, well, you know, the husband talked to the wife. I, you know, I know.
I think we have it all.
Yeah, he's figured out, he's figured out.
Straight down, on the deed and everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I'd like to read this.
All right, I'm sorry.
Okay. I apologize for how long that took.
All right.
What?
You don't know me, but I know you.
Is there any other public comment?
I have all types of friends in the EMS who's over for the seizures all the time. Thank you. All right.
This came up after, it was suggested after our rec meeting, so I'm bringing it to you. One, we are having our Veterans Day event on November 9th, and I hope all of you can attend. We're really excited. We have a 101-year-old World War II veteran. He's going to be there, yeah, so it's going to be fun. Also, a Korean War veteran. It was, someone suggested that we have a silent auction, and we also have a raffle, and all the proceeds go to the DFW here on 7th of July. That we could possibly have one or two uses of the community center as one of those raffle items, either as a raffle or a silent auction item. So we'd go up like, people would bid and be able to rent the community center off of that, and that would be like a donation from the World War II of that.
It would be anything that could use the community. Can we just get a kidney or something? I have to wait till Andrew gets back. I'm sure we can definitely take a vote on it.
Mary Ann.
I thought it sounded so cool.
Yeah. Mary Ann is requesting that we donate use of the community center to be raffle off or to silent auction at the Veterans Day.
So one or two. I'd like two, but I'll accept one, but I would like two. Yeah. Weekend. Yeah, weekend, because I have a better.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion for one use of a weekend rental for the community.
Two uses. I have two.
I'll save one.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye. My vote is aye.
All right, is there anything else involved? I have backwards speech, I have, right? Is there anything else involved in rec that you need me for?
I don't think so.
The only real thing I was going to bring up is that the survey was just about done and going to go out at the end of the month, but we touched on that earlier.
Is council going to get an opportunity to see that before it goes out?
What we sent to everybody?
To approve it, not approve it?
The feasibility, committee approves it, and then, once that's approved, then it'll go out to the citizens, it's not.
I don't, I mean, I don't think it'll be a big deal, but.
Look, if you've seen it and feel it's okay.
Yeah, I think it's good. Yeah, it's open-ended too, so people can make suggestions of like.
Good, because I've got, I've got three people that want to have a splash for their kids.
Splash person, it's not a bad idea.
All right, so everyone's good? All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Anybody else?
I promise I'll just read this off, make it very brief. I don't even want to sit down here after.
I cheated.
No, seriously, that's. I have a timeline that I will give out to each of you of the occurrences that I noticed. So my name is Lauren DeMeyer, and I care to comment on the Stockton Show store at 204 North Constitution, which is adjacent to my home, 206. I'll begin by saying I pay special attention to this property because I learned that no information for selling to minors, and I am raising grandchildren in my home, so I will look and see what's going out outside my windows.
Was that the previous owner or the current owner?
I, yeah, and I think.
I'm turning my hearing aids up.
It's, it all went down, I, my understanding was when they had just taken over it, the manager. So since this is a traditional neighborhood, from what I've observed, there's three violations. Number one, a retail store or shop in a traditional neighborhood. And finally, there are my special exception, which I have not seen in, in minutes. So I'd like to, I'll file a write-in note to see if there has been any. Because traditional neighborhood under 225-306 states, uses permitted by special exception, the public uses shall be permitted. It gives a loan list with authorized by the zoning authority. The zoning authority shall hear and decide the price for such according to criteria established in chapters four and 10 of this chapter. Gives a list, the ten on the list is a retail store or shop. So that's my first. And then the third, the second, where I feel, from what I've seen, is since September 24th, the managers of the store are residing in the store now. I'm not aware of a mixed-use property. I have pictures from I observe because I like to be safe. So when I'm locking up at night or just outdoors, going to the rail trail, riding my bike outside with the kids, gardening, I take notice. And like I said, I have a special interest because I live beside it and I care about the kids in the community and in my neighborhood, and especially my grandchildren. So I noticed, and again, I have a timeline for each of you, you can read it. I noticed on September 24th that the car never left. It was there from 10:00 AM, they turned the lights off until early the next morning, it never left. And it has continued like that, and I have diligently checked and taken pictures. And I did call Wade on September 25th and ran it by him, and he said there could be something else, you know. It could be an explanation, but I haven't called him since then. I have just been doing my job of keeping a law and everything. So I, you know, that's number two of where I feel the whole violation is. And then number three, on October 9th, a semi truck pulls up and for three and a half hours, it took four guys to unload a deluge of building supplies, from metal studs to six-by-eight approximately large wooden, probably 12 of those, maybe, wooden panels. And then after that, another set of thinner panels. One panel was so large that they struggled, and I'm sorry, I'm talking to my, it's, it's after this last thing.
No, I turned them off there, I can hear you.
They struggled to get them in. I don't know what that is. And bales and bales of insulation. So they're residing there, and I, I know.
Did you have a thought as to what the building material was for?
Well.
Did you see what they did with it?
It is my thought that if they're there camping out, somehow, there's no residents in that building, that they are going to build something in there to live in?
We got any things examined?
I am asking, pardon? I don't believe there's any, I don't see any permit in their window at all. It brings me to one more, maybe the retail shop, there's also a maximum sales or display area that is limited to 2,000 square feet, according to 225-431. And according to the sales, the sale of the property to the current owners, the sales floor is 2,940 square feet. So the number of parking spaces that is required, that is required for a 2,000-square-feet area is 10 parking spaces. The Stockton Show has six parking spaces and almost, you know, 3,000 square feet. So they really need 14 spaces or more. So they are, I mean, I would like to know, since ordinances are laws, right? And we need to follow those laws and enforce them. Why should this be allowed? And what is this saying to our community and our citizens about we're just going to do whatever? And none of what your work and what you do matters because we can do whatever. I, I will be keeping an eye out, I will be following up because I don't believe they're on the other end. I don't believe they're a benefit to the borough, I believe they're a detriment. And, yeah, so I'll leave you with my timeline and keep following up to see. I would, I would hope that the zoning officer would come in and investigate and see what's going on there. And then address that for starters, and then all of the other, the other two that I named.
So.
No, I'm finished.
So regarding the zoning, and I appreciate that you did research and looked at the ordinances and kind of dove into that a little bit. The issue with that is zoning ordinance, the use was there as a retail store, so it's considered pre-existing non-conforming.
Correct, but for a year it wasn't, so you can't go in and.
There's case law against that, that once that use is established. I'll use an example of a Speedway in northern Pennsylvania that there was vegetation, trees growing in the Speedway, and the argument was there that it actually went through to the upper courts, or higher courts, that that use was still there as established, and they were able to actually open that Speedway, that racetrack again, even though it was abandoned for 20, 30 years or more. So there's a lot of case law against that, that, and I dealt with this in another municipality where there was a business that was closed for numerous years and reopened under that pre-existing non-conforming. Now.
Where was the retail, there wasn't a retail shop there?
It was the welding supply, correct? But before that, it was.
Yeah, he just had an eyeglass.
Well, that's a professional, the eyeglass is a professional service.
It was, it was listed as a retail store.
So what, okay, so what about the square footage?
Again, it's pre-existing non-conforming at that point.
But what about the codes that are needed for building? What about the state UCC codes and all of that? The water usage, sewer usage, for them to be living there?
Well, okay, that's a whole different. Yeah, that's a whole different. So, again, we had a few previous concerns that we've taken a look at. I know our current enforcement officer met with the property, walked through the building on September 18th. At that time, now that has since changed, obviously, from what you're saying tonight. They were patching some drywall.
Right, Wade did tell me that.
And, and replacing some ceiling tile, making an office space. Now, there was a portion of the back of the building that was still unfinished, that they were not planning to do anything per the owner at that time. From what you're saying, what's occurred only a few days ago, there was a large supply truck that brought in materials. I will say that the new owner has been cooperative and as soon as we've sent letters, has said, come out, you know, the light, he turned off until we get a shield.
The shield is not going all the way around, I still have red light shining on my own.
And we'll communicate that with the owner, that, you know, they installed the shield. He basically said he'll just turn it off at that point, if there's still an issue. So, if they're doing things outside of what was inspected on September 18th, and only occurred, again, late last week, then there's follow-up that we need to have with the property owner.
Well, and what about residing in a building that...
Yes, that can't happen.
That happened September 24th, yeah, I mean, and ongoing continuously.
I mean, as far as, I think the difficult thing with that is, he's in there working. Obviously, the vehicle's there all night, there's something else happening, so that's something that we need to follow up with.
Right.
They cannot have, that use, as we said, is established as a retail store. And even outside of that is a change, that's not pre-existing.
You have a timeline of, let you guys know now. Alright, I'll follow up, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Eileen Swalina, I live at Hope Farm in New Freedom. So, I've lived there 34 years, and...
Let's see, I'm sorry, let's see the address a little far more.
Ten.
Ten.
Yep, so I'm the original, and I've had an issue with my neighbor and her ladyland side of the streets. Encroaching on my property for, in my paperwork, I have 10 years, but it's been well over 10 years, probably 15 years. I didn't know what to do, I researched, this is my folder on trees and the law, and I found that there is a law in 1993, it's Jones versus Wagner, and it basically says I can trim her trees back to my property line, and if I damage her trees, it's not my fault, and I can be compensated for this. So, I mean, I've done all this, I really didn't know what to do, and talking with just my home contractor, also with New Freedom, he mentioned going to small claims court, it's the last, absolute last thing I wanted to do. When this all started, it's been a horrible summer, this summer with storms, and honestly, it takes with her trees, they're 25 years old at least, and it takes honestly three hours, maybe four, with a bad one in August. August, seven, four hours of cleaning up. She will not work with me in any way, in any way. So, my question is, I called the borough, and they say, "No, we don't get involved with that, Brenda." And I'm just wondering why maybe we don't get involved with this? And can we do something that we could maybe get, I know budget's retired long type thing, but could we get possibly some volunteers to get on a little, on a board and have like a mediation process for a case like I have? I mean, I am now going to court, and I feel like it's the absolute last thing I wanna do. It's probably wasting the judge's time. If I could have mediated with this woman, maybe we could have worked it out. She would not talk, she came over and talked to me once, she walked away from me twice, and...
Did you offer her mediation? Did you ask her, can we get together?
I asked her so many times.
'Cause we can't, I don't think anyone can really force anyone to go to a mediation. It has to be agreeable.
I know, I understand that, but could we, could New Freedom have something like that? Have a mediation board, have an arbitration board, something, even with volunteers, because the budget's so tight? I would volunteer for that board. I think all the other people, we're talking about roaches, and we're talking about other things, and if we had even a group of volunteers that could talk to people and maybe get them to mediate and not go to the level that I've had to go to. My court date's in November. I mean, honestly, I feel like this could be helpful in our town. I mean, when, everything I've read about these trees, it says, "Check with your local municipality, check with your local municipality." Well, I mean, I've called many times, "No, we don't get involved with that."
Yeah, unfortunately, there's no, a local government can't create a separate court system or a separate jurisdiction that requires for nuisance abatement, stuff like that. Certainly has its merits, but unfortunately...
What's the number of the offending property, you said your 10.
Yes, it's, I'm an old farm, and adjoining property is at South Schaefer Drive.
Oh, okay.
So, it's encroaching on my property, at least 15 feet into my property, and probably 80 feet, but almost the entire length of my lawn. And this is not what I wanna do, I do not wanna go to court. I, I feel it's my very last resort, and I felt like if I could come to this board and just say, "I would love to volunteer." I volunteer in Maryland already. I would love to volunteer and help people with their issues, and help people with the roaches. Help me with my trees, just something to say, "There is somebody to help you." Call this person, and I understand you have to agree to mediate. If you don't, it doesn't happen, then you do go to court. But I didn't wanna do that, I mean, I wanna ask the...
See, you did, you did want to...
Yes, I did want to mediate, and she might have mediated. If someone like me, a volunteer, said, "Hey, Mrs. Smith, will you volunteer with, will you mediate with Eileen?" She might have, but talking to her, no. Me talking to her, no. I tried, she walked away from me twice, I tried, I got her back the first time, and then the second time, I didn't get her back. She walked away, she came to my backyard.
That's gonna be, that's gonna be tough, I mean, even roach...
Yes, this is, they're insignificant compared to the roach issue. My heart goes out to that woman. I mean, this is stressful for me, and, I mean, I am not the person to take anyone to court, and I never have in my life, but I feel like there could have been an easier way. There could have been something in the system for me to, to mediate, to arbitrate with this woman and get it taken before, now I'm going in November. And I didn't wanna do that, so that's just what I came for tonight.
I think mediation is a legal process, and we're not allowed to get involved there. You're doing exactly what you should do. I had the same question come up from a resident, and the answer was, basically, you have to take them to court.
Yeah, but usually mediation is a voluntary process.
Right, exactly.
It's not, it's not, I mean, if someone says no, then it doesn't happen.
You can't force somebody to mediate.
No, you can't, but, but give them the opportunity. That's what I'm saying, give them the opportunity. And, and I wasn't given the opportunity because the borough does not get involved.
What's the last name of the offending property?
My...
Not the last name of the...
I mean, this, I'm not a person to take anyone to court, I never have in my life, you know? And I feel like if I had an opportunity with, with, even, I would volunteer today. I would volunteer today to do that, to help people in this community get some answers, get some help, and not have to go my route.
And I wouldn't be surprised if the magistrate does encourage you guys to take some time before the hearing to see if you can work out your differences and resolve it, that happens a lot.
Right.
So, so there's a chance that...
But court costs to both, I already had to pay my court costs. I mean, it's a lot of things that I feel like are plaguing up our court system. You know, that I think I could have gotten this handled in a better way, and not in the way it's gonna be handled now. And that's just, just what I'm asking for, and maybe you could consider it, if you can.
I'll, and we can talk with the solicitor, but I think as he said, there's really not anything that we can set up as a, as a side. You could almost put...
Not even as volunteers, I, I feel like if you ask people, they will help, and they will volunteer. And I see all the lovely people in this office right, in this room right now, and I bet all of them will help.
Honestly, she's getting in. Excuse me, I have a neighbor just like that. Put up wild maple trees this far from my property line, trees come over, just pay someone to trim them. You can do that.
Right.
Cut them out.
Right.
That's all you can do.
I can pay someone to trim that.
Just do it.
Honestly, I got...
As long as you don't kill the tree.
I can kill the tree, I can.
She can.
The law, the law, Jones versus Wagner, I can kill the tree.
Just make sure it's a licensed, uh, what you...
Oh, they have to be registered, they have to register, I already called the attorney general's office, they have to be registered. My lowest estimate was $2,200, a lot of money to trim those trees up to my property line.
Well, I think we can do it.
I mean, the highest estimate was $2,500, I've been retired six years. I get a flat pension rate, I do not get raises, and that's really not affordable, out of my budget. I mean, that's why I'm just asking for the thought of volunteer to help people. And I would be the first one to volunteer.
And I, and I appreciate, I appreciate that, but I, you know, I mean, unless someone wants to make a motion, I, I can't, I don't think that the Borough Council can start a mediation service, it's not. That's really what the district justice is for, and that is the lowest level of court, the small claims court.
Small claims, unfortunately.
Yeah, it is unfortunate.
I'm not that kind of person.
I know, but there's very few people, if, if you can't get your neighbor to trim her trees because she should, mediation probably isn't gonna force her to do it.
I think mediation might have, might have made her consider it, where she's not considering it now. But I feel like mediation would have helped with the lady with the roach issue too.
No, she, the person who we all think is the problem would not have mediated it. It would not have, really pretty much had to be, the issue had to be forced.
Just having that opportunity.
When you're, when you're going to court, is your neighbor gonna have to appear too, the judge please?
I'm sorry?
You said you're going to court in November, right?
Yes.
Does your neighbor have to appear?
She has to appear, I'm, I'm the plaintiff, she's the defendant.
Someone, right?
Yeah, it's just unfortunate, I feel like it's unfortunate it had to come to this, but... If you ever need a volunteer for that, something like that, think of me, so...
Appreciate it.
I thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody else?
Just to speak on it?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Herbert, and I have been in New Freedom for about 29 years. And my neighbor and I, I can see the talk about the agenda in one on, and we got this as part of the agenda tonight, and a little confused and a little concerned. And this is starting, where it says, oh, first off, I didn't know that we had a borough manager, and let alone that he has a company vehicle, and that's what I'm waiting here as...
He doesn't have a company vehicle, there's a vehicle that stays at the borough office that he uses if he goes to a training, or he goes to another meeting with another borough, but he doesn't take the vehicle home.
Well, it doesn't specify that it is here and for...
It is.
Because that's under section, same as for automotive. And I, the way I was reading, as well as my neighbor was, is that this was a company-paid vehicle. I work in fleet management, vehicles are not cheap. I can help with the ambulance, I can help with the cabin chassis, I can help with the chase vehicle, because I can be able to invoice.
Wow.
So, that I'm putting out there, if anybody wants to reach out to me, I have dealerships that I work directly with, and that's something that will...
A card?
I don't have a, I didn't bring one, because I just kinda heard it out.
Did you sign in when you came in with your name and address?
Yes.
Did you give your information to the Rose Fire Company?
No, again, I'm, I'm just hearing all this tonight, it's kinda like I'm jotting notes on this, because that's...
But you heard, you heard them earlier talking about it, correct?
That's why I'm bringing it up, because I can definitely help, it's unbelievable, the markup on vehicles.
Yes, absolutely.
So, the main thing that I was looking at was, there is some type of termination policy that's being added?
The borough, the borough manager is, serves the pleasure of council, and serves, like, for instance, every two years, we have a reorganization. So, the borough manager can be terminated at the beginning of each two-year council period.
Correct, but it's being added that they're going to get six months severance for any termination. How is that possible? That, I mean, that's gonna be $60,000 that the borough is gonna pay out for the severance. That's not taking into consideration the community, because typically, severance packages are provided maybe thirty days, not six months, especially at such a large salary.
Yeah, we haven't discussed that.
But it's in here.
Can I make a motion to move this employment agreement up the agenda? Apparently, she's here to discuss it, you're kinda discussing it, there could be others out here that wanna discuss it.
Well, I'm looking at it as personal as well, because it says to reference it in future as borough manager, but then it names Mr. Schaefer specifically. So, why is, that is to me very personal, and this is not a council situation. And it's, to me, it's an impending election, right before an election, this is being added. To me personally, I'll take his job, and if I get fired, I'm gonna get six months of $60,000, I'll take it. Not a problem, especially with a vehicle at my disposal. And I just, I, I see a lot of red flags, and it needs to be discussed further before such a thing is implemented.
Again, it hasn't been approved or even discussed, as you, this is the first time council's seeing it.
I'll second, I'll second the motion, so we can discuss it.
I have discussion on that, because already we moved the budget up, I think we should, we burned off two hours. We have people here waiting for, to get to their item that's on the agenda. I would recommend that we move the budget items to a continuation meeting and try to get through this agenda tonight, that would be my suggestion.
Is there anybody else there for this issue?
I'm here for the contract issue. If you wanna move it up, I'm here to discuss it.
So, it's not being taken lightly, obviously, by the community, and I'll be honest with you, this is my first meeting ever, and it was because of this being brought to my attention, because the borough manager is making one-fifth of the ENS total budget. But, you know, think of it that way, I'm not, I apologize.
I don't remember where you're getting that, it's just...
Well, the other thing too, though, is that it does not list any duties.
We have a motion in a second, we get this moved up so we can discuss this.
Any further discussion? Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Votes?
No, I vote as no.
Others no? So, I need to show hands, 'cause I couldn't figure out who voted, what was four, three. Who voted yes?
Yes.
Three, and no is one, two, three, four. So, motion does not carry, we'll leave it on the agenda where it is.
So, the other thing that I, I guess I'm worried about or question, I don't see any type of job responsibilities what is done by the borough manager. Other things are listed, like the mayor, your salary is posted at $50 a year. You go there, okay, you got that cost.
I heard everybody of it. The borough manager's job is listed in the borough E-code.
I'll go, you can find it.
Yeah, it describes, I think it's chapter 30, describes his job. But mostly, he does whatever is requested at the direction of council.
I just have to say, why wouldn't you wanna move this up? Because you have multiple people here that wanna discuss it, why make them sit here for hours?
Because we have multiple people for the other agenda items too, and I don't think it's fair to the people that we invited.
They're there for this too.
No, not all of them. This gentleman's sitting here waiting for the VFW, and the VFW gentleman is waiting for the VFW, and so, all that I did, we did, was vote to leave the agenda the way it is. And so all that I did, we did was vote to leave the agenda the way it is.
But that's pretty far down.
We might not, we could get to.
I'm sorry.
Well, the, I just have a, a question. I kind of.
Sure.
Didn't understand. I got like told I was going to be fined because my grass was too tall. Yet the people that were living next door to these people in Juanita, they didn't get fined for all the trash and stuff they had. I got fined because my daughter's vehicle was in a five-man vehicular man, uh, vehicular murder thing when the state police released her towed car and I put it in a parking pad at my house. The borough tried to fine me when the state police told me I could not move that vehicle because they released it too soon. You know, these are things I had a fight, did not get fined by the borough, but these people just seem to be getting noise stop free. And I just, I'm very curious as why they weren't fined for having all the trash and unkept yard when I've been threatened with fines multiple times for less.
They were sent letters, right? I'm sorry, they were sent, they were sent citation letters. They were sent. And the, most of the, the trash problems that we have with them were inside the house.
I've been by it. It's outside too.
It's outside.
It's outside. So you're saying that my grass was three inches on a fence line that I couldn't physically get to. You're going to fine me, but you can leave these people have grass up to their knees. You can take my house after, if I don't pay the fines. So why not get these people where it hurts?
I understand what you're saying. I have no idea about your grass issue.
Well, I mean, I can't, I had it handled, but it's.
Yeah.
My grass was this tall and I'm getting a letter and it wasn't even this wide. But they're going to get away with it scot-free. So something's not adding up with what's going on with how the borough handled things. And this was just an exciting meeting, so. I appreciate your time and I thank you and.
What, what was your address?
Um, two twenty-one East Main Street.
Thank you.
And I can give you my number if y'all want to reach out to me. Thank you.
Uh, okay. I, um, with everyone's permission, I'd like to go head down through the agenda so that we can maybe get some people that are here for specific items out of here.
Is it a question?
Yeah.
A question?
I just want to make sure that the items that we're here for discussion tonight will not be tabled and for a continuation meeting when most everybody cannot attend.
Uh, the only item that will be, I'm hoping, the only item that would be tabled would be the budget, which we would do a continuation meeting. And, uh, the, uh, I think we need to have a budget meeting and the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth of October are available, I think, to some people. So everyone, please check their calendars.
I would say that we don't do that right now. Don't plan on tabling it. Let's move on. That's what you're going to do. Let's move on. Let's get through this.
Sure.
And, uh, keep it moving.
Approval of minutes, meeting held September eleventh.
Make a motion to be approved of minutes from, from September eleventh.
I'll second.
I have a second. Discussion. Call in favor?
What, what discussion?
I'm sorry?
Um, page two in the Glen Rock Service Agreement, we didn't reserve the right to approve it. That's not what the, um, motion was the reason. Uh, we passed it. And then that was just to get them the draft letter and sent over. We didn't reserve any right to. They know at a later time. So that is to be fixed. Over on page three, the resolution operates in local grant share, talks about it's a hundred percent funded. Um, I believe it was a fifty-four thousand one hundred.
I'm sorry, I believe we did say that we wanted the right to look at the and approve the, uh, the rate that they would be charged. Am I not correct right now?
Back there, listen to it. The word is not there. Things on there. It was not. The word reserved was not there. Confident that I don't have the paper where I looked down.
Well, we could, we could check.
You can absolutely listen to it. And that, but the, um, for the generator, was it fifty-four thousand one hundred? Great, for the grant. Cause it says that it, grant provides a hundred percent funding. It was fifty-four thousand one? Okay. So if you can, um, add that cost, that's important. And I'm surprised nobody caught this. I don't know if nobody's not reading their minutes. Um, under the president's report, talks about having an executive session, um, personnel, police department. And I kind of sat there for a minute going, we didn't have an executive session. I went back and looked and that is August. In the September meeting, um, you said you have nothing were your words. So I was a bit confused on what's the process of completing our minutes? How a whole nother month got in September?
That was my fault.
The how? How, how do you complete the minutes?
Well, it was probably copied and pasted and it just was a mistake. Oh, would you?
Copy to August to put it in September?
You, I used the same form, not from month to month, and I reviewed the audio and video. So it was my mistake for leaving that in there.
Okay, so you just changed, so this said August at the top, you just changed September and then you take.
And then I just start down three and I update it. And so again, my mistake.
Got it.
Missed it during proofreading.
Got it. So those are the three, one, two, three, three items.
Any other discussion? Okay. Make a mo, I, I modify your motion.
Modify my motion for the three corrections.
Well, and the first, the first correction, uh, needs this to be corrected to whatever was actually said.
Yeah.
Well, then pending review of the, the audio or the video.
Yeah.
So I amend my motion for that and then the second two I noted.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 My vote is aye. Okay, uh, September twenty-fifth. Minutes.
Make a motion to be approved September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Motion?
I'll second.
Second, any discussion?
I just thought it was kind of odd. We don't have Denny's name anywhere at the top of the paper that he was even here. We can go under.
Cause that was from Borough Council.
Also present, well.
He wasn't, he wasn't elected. He wasn't appointed till during the business.
Well, he was, but then before it, he made the motion to adjourn, but shouldn't it be listed like he was even here? Like, did we do this without him here? Shouldn't he be like gold under also present or something?
We got listed.
Other people in the audience that were also present. So.
I was saying, I just thought it kind of.
Do you do that, like at the beginning of the meeting, so-and-so was here, which he wouldn't have been involved at the beginning of the meeting?
I mean, it was listed. If he was sworn in during the meeting to take a council seat, should he just be listed up here somewhere under one of those?
I mean, before he's sworn in, he's just a regular citizen.
Yeah, but then he made the adjournment for the, for the meeting.
By that point, he had been appointed.
Mm-hmm.
Call in favor?
All right.
So we're on.
Those? My vote is aye.
Yeah, I do. Yeah, if you don't want to put it out there, I just thought it was odd.
I, I didn't say I didn't want to.
Well, they didn't want to, I guess.
Treasurers report for September twenty-three.
I see any questions or I don't think they got answered?
I have, I have some answers. I didn't get to answer your complete email, but I have the ones that were taken in the treasurer's report.
Uh, make a motion to be approved the treasurer's report for September twenty twenty-three pending review.
Motion?
Second.
Second discussion? Do you want to enter any questions?
Yes. Uh, on page four, there was a question about the escrow transfer. So that, that escrow transfer related to funds that were held or, or are usually held when there's a fire, fire loss within the borough that exceeds the limitations, uh, set forth in the ordinance. So what happens in that case is the insurance company for the property sends the borough a check for a portion of that damage. And that's to ensure that the repairs or demolition is included. At the time that. So those funds get released over a period of time as construction or demolition progresses. And at the end of it, it's one final release when the use and occupancy certificate is issued. So that question, I believe that shows up both on page four and page fourteen.
If your revenue and expense.
Yeah, we had to transfer that in, out of the escrow account and then pay it back out.
That's generally how that works?
Yes.
Is that, uh, what didn't happen on the other fire that happened on, on that street? I know that was right around the time that you first came here.
Well, that was before. Um, we're trying to clean that up, but D C D requires that if the borough has an ordinance, that that has to be listed in their, in their database. For whatever reason, in the past, the borough's ordinance was never listed with D C D. Therefore, when that fire loss occurred, the insurance company was not responsible to issue the check to the borough. Um, if that would have happened, it wouldn't have taken so many years, but clearly we've had two since then. Um, and both we had insurance escrows and. Address. Thank you. Um, on page thirteen, there was a ques, question about the Biljacks repair. That was a repair of the master lift cylinder. Um, basically there was a tremendous amount of labor involved with that because they had to remove the entire boom assembly in order to get to that lift cylinder and replace it. Um, so it was one of those things where there wasn't a lot of, uh, parts, but a lot of labor.
What equipment was that?
The Biljacks repair.
With Biljacks repair, what was the equipment?
It's a lift. Also on page thirteen, that was, uh, there was a question for seven hundred and sixty dollars to Penn Buck. This is for continuing education credits for B C O certification.
What's B C M?
Building credential. And they require continuing edu, education credits in order to keep the license covered. Your certification covered. Page fourteen, the V F W of Weathersfield, the question was asked about how much the borough has paid in engineering review fees and how much has been reimbursed to the borough to date since the start of the project? The answer there is the invoices that the borough has received and paid to date is seventeen thousand four hundred forty-six dollars. What has been reimbursed to the borough is sixteen thousand nine hundred ninety-three. And the difference there is just a recent invoice. Along the V F W lines, there was a question regarding what the total fees have been waived for the V F W. And to my knowledge, the only fee that was waived was the initial application fee. Uh, based on current rates, this would have been approximately one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. All other accrued fees, as we just mentioned, have been reimbursed to the borough.
That fee was, um, waived by council, correct?
Yes, yes. Again, that was only the initial application fee. Everything past that has to be reimbursed.
Right.
Also on page fourteen, twenty twenty-three fire relief shows a zero. So that, you will see a zero anytime we have to void a check because that check is still established, a check number, and we have to show that in the register. What happened there is, um, as we've talked about before, the borough receives, uh, foreign fire insurance premiums once a year from the state. That money has to go to the Volunteer Fire Relief Association. And that check specifically has to be worded with Rose Fire Volunteer Fire Relief Association based on the Department of Alder General's guidelines. So this check, as you can see, was issued to Rose Fire Company. That, we can't do that. So that had to be voided. The check was reissued in October, so you'll see that on the October presentation.
Yeah, they're two different entities.
Yeah, they have to be.
They have, my state says they have.
Well, yeah, that, anytime there is a check voided, like I said, you will see a zero there. Um, and the last question referred to the escrow payout, which we discussed, uh,
I forget what page it was on. So Sherwin, Sherwood. Sherwin Williams? Did we, was that for paint?
Yes.
For?
Uh, I do know we supplied paint for the scout work that was done on the buildings.
Oh, oh, okay. The scouts painted it and we supplied the paint.
Yeah, I believe that.
That was before the, um, car. Right? Well, yeah.
Do you have the total expenses from the previous one?
Um, I don't have it finalized because I need to check all the numbers. However, I will, I'll give you a rough idea. In twenty twenty-two, uh, you were looking for total expenditure, expenses from the community center from all funds. I believe it was, uh, somewhere around eighty thousand. Now, taking into account that's, some of that is offset by rents and leases. But that's the total expenses and that's what you asked for. And I believe to date on in twenty twenty-three, we're about a hundred and ten thousand.
Right now.
I will finalize, you have to come in right now. And I will finalize the numbers and get those out. The main difference between the two years was the access control system.
Any other discussion? I still don't understand the Sherwin Williams. Why would we not?
It might have not been, it would have been.
Well, it says highway. I was hoping it went to line painting. And I've several requests.
So I know they were doing some painting inside the garage.
Okay.
I felt kind of shocked.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those? My vote is aye. Okay. Uh, chapter two twenty-five, um, sign regulation.
So just as a kind of introductory, this is just in draft. This would completely replace the current signed ordinance in the zoning section of the Borough's Code of Ordinances. This is just for your review and, uh, comments, I would say maybe at the, at the next meeting. But I, I don't think that maybe tonight's the night to go through thirteen pages.
No. Probably not. I, I, and one of my questions, I asked the commercial C. Is that the only thing that was changed? But now you're saying this whole thing was rewritten?
This whole thing is new. Yeah.
Whole thing. How come they highlighted it?
Uh, those are just things that we need to go back and clarify that they match what's currently in there.
And then this commercial zone C, I'd ask for a map of where that is and if they.
The zoning app is on the borough's website, but I can get you a printed copy.
Put it with this. Thanks.
So we'll put that, this on the agenda, uh, for approval to advertise for.
Well, no, no, this is just, everybody, I think everybody needs to take the time to review this.
Right, right. I'm saying next month we'll review it and then. So we need a motion to table it until next week? Yeah, yeah, basically. Motion to, motion to table it until next month.
So moved.
So I can now?
All in favor?
Aye.
Those? My vote is aye. So we'll leave it on the agenda? Uh, stormwater channel? Yeah, you say that.
All right. So everybody has a copy of the September twenty-seventh letter from D E P indicating the technical deficiencies in the permit application. Uh, if you recall, we received a letter initially with an incompleteness review for the package. Those comments were addressed. Those comments were addressed. Now, D E P has come back when they're reviewing that joint application permit, again, just to make those modifications at the daylight of the pipe, um, that council previously discussed.
On North Constitution?
This is on this water discharge of one constitution.
So you're just gonna make these deficiencies fix it and send it back?
We will work with the engineer to address these comments, um, but there are some things that are way outside of the scope of what needs to occur here. And we did schedule a virtual meeting with the reviewer to try to make them understand that this is a stormwater channel, does not have, uh, it's not constant flows, this is only during wet weather events, um, in hopes that they back off on those requests.
When you say virtual, do you mean like you go out there with FaceTime or you just-
No, no, this will just be-
Go out there on a computer?
This will just be, because D E P really doesn't come out unfortunately.
That's what I'm saying, like go out with FaceTime so they can see the yards, they can see the leg, they can see everything. They don't, they don't want that.
We offered that before we even got to this point.
So they, so they haven't been out there to see it?
No. They, they, we requested onsite meetings, we requested meetings that they, they would not.
Your ten dollars of work.
So we will continue to work through, but I just wanted everybody to have a letter to understand difficulties you go through to try to make a simple repair, um, when you're dealing with.
I know, two boy scouts and a shovel.
Yep.
Okay, uh, Glen Rock Police Coverage Agreement status. We have this, the, uh, police services agreement, correct?
Yeah, just, we passed it last month. There's two minor adjustments for wording in five and eight, nothing major, just stating that overages Glen Rock to be billed and paid for, if the overage under five, eight, they just, uh, changed the wording to respond to emergency calls. Um, I have P A, state or something in there, so that's all that is.
That looks good for me. Do we need a motion to accept it? Okay, I would entertain a motion to accept the changes to the police services agreement for Glen Rock.
I'll make that move. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Ours?
Aye.
Vote is no.
I'm sorry, how many no's did I get?
Two.
Two. My vote is aye.
So that, um, that item was also to include the pending I G A too.
Yep, the I G A will start needing, uh, in the next couple of weeks and then have something back to the boroughs. It's eighty-five, ninety percent done, um, just need to remove Glen Rock from it. Um, so that's it, and the boroughs were already given this I G A previously.
So we should have it like in December or something like that?
November, yep.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
Uh, draft and example rental housing and occupancy ordinances.
I was very overwhelmed with that hundred and fifty-something pages. I think it was a bit excess, uh, dealing with people, boroughs, so forth, way away. I was at, uh, Stewartstown, chief was there. Stewartstown's looking to implement a rental agreement. They're having two to three calls a week. They had an O D that weekend, uh, in a rental, um, where they had repeated issues. Um, chief was there with Glen Rocks, said Glen Rocks works well. Glen Rocks has had there since, uh, twenty twelve. Um, hope everybody read through it, and, um, I would make the motion that we consider Glen Rocks rental.
Motion in a second to consider incorporating Glen Rocks, um, rental agreement.
Follow up with that. Um, it's part that starts out that the intent, which is to protect public safety, health, and welfare of borough, um, citizens and so forth. When you get over, it's on page twenty, uh, it's for the owner responsibility. It's notwithstanding the provisions of section, um, one B, whenever infestation is caused by failure of the owner to maintain a rental property unit by a rodent-proof or reasonable insect-proof condition, extermination thereof shall be the responsibility of the owner. Kind of goes in there, so like really protects the owner, um, situation we were with. Talks about, on the next page, tenant responsibilities right in there. It talks about their trash, their garbage disposal, um, which might provide food for insects and/or rodents and so forth. So there's a lot of good things in there. Um, this really helps the police with, uh, when they go out, what they do is, you know, they're not just writing tickets for everyone they go out for, they use discretion. Um, but when you have an issue with a tenant or, or the landlord or owner for that, um, uh, matter, um, they write the disruptive conduct report that gets sent to the borough. Um, they have fifteen days to appeal it if they'd like. Um, after three disruptive conduct incidences in a twelve-month period, um, and, uh, the manager should have thirty days from the day of receipt of the third disruptive conduct, uh, or fifteen days from the day of the appeal decision, whichever is earlier to begin eviction proceedings against occupants. If failure to take such action will result in the immediate relocation of the residential rental license. Um, you know, they only have inspections every three years, um, and it, and I think it's a great way that they do it. So the first quarter of the year is the inspection is due. So the borough sends out the, um, the fee to be paid by the owner within the first three months. Then, um, the second and third quarter, the owner and renter contact code enforcement, and they have six months to schedule. That is more than ample time to, uh, find time for it to go be inspected. And then the fourth quarter, um, is when the borough looks at, um, the inspections, review for inspections and identify any, um, problem areas.
Doesn't the, um, Glen Rock, the, the whole, um, disruptions and the whole, I mean, that a- actually almost adds a layer, it actually is a, a police action, right?
Police action.
Well, whenever they, there's a disruption or, you know-
It notifies, you know, uh, chief talks about yellow apartments down in Avonita. It is a huge problem for your freedom. The calls that go there, the time that is spent there, so we don't know every time they're getting called out there, but when they get called out, it is for a substantiated, you know, offense, then the borough would get a ticket saying, hey, you know, at house, house five, you know, this is what happened. If that happens three more times in a year, or, you know, there is now something in place to remedy that for a, a, a owner, adapting like this owner with this fight that we were brought tonight that's been going on for a year plus, right here, outside of the ordinance, which I take care of it, but here, um, there's warranty in it, so.
Is it, are the, how are the, I'm gonna say points, just because that's a system I'm familiar with. How are the, are there points per police call or how, how is that?
Not points, it's a ticket. So they, they, if they write for whatever the offense was, and like I, chief said, they're not writing for everyone, but if you've got domestic violence, you've gotten thrown, breaking glass up, you know, things like-
Well, then that's a, that's, that's exactly, exactly my point, because I know other communities, I think courts have struck down similar ordinances because of, of the impact on, like, domestic violence victims, because we have people who won't call the police if it's domestic violence, if they know they have two tickets and they get a third one, they're gonna get thrown out.
Well, like I said, since twenty twelve, this has been in Glen Rock, and this is what chief took to Stewartstown to model. I think it's something that we can model, we can tweak it to our needs here within our own borough, um, but it's something that a sister municipality is doing, working for them, and with what you saw here tonight, we definitely need something.
Do we think three, every three years is adequate?
Well, maybe.
Depends on when the violation occurs. If the violation occurs tomorrow-
No, no, I'm talking about regular-
To keep this, to keep this meeting going, can we agree, let's take a look at it, that's what we're gonna do, and we'll come back next month and look at Glen Rock, specify, no, don't look at hundred and fifty-five pages, zero and on Glen Rock. Tell what, what you think.
I would agree to take a look at Glen Rock.
And then we have to do this as a, as an ordinance, right? How far does this go, page what? There's so many.
What?
Well, it's just Glen Rocks.
Glen Rock goes to-
Trying to get to the end of Glen Rock.
Thirty-two.
I'm sorry?
Thirty-two.
Oh, thirty-two. I'll make this one. Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to table and bring back, go ahead.
She gives already a motion in a second, and that's to review and then update Glen Rocks ordinance to apply to new freedoms.
Basically.
Just like we did the first time.
I can amend my motion to say we're gonna review and look at this and come back in our November meeting to discuss this further. Can I clarify?
So, just so for the work, Rob, is that we're taking Glen Rocks and updating it specifically just to apply to new freedoms language, or we're just looking at it still as Glen Rocks draft ordinance?
Well, I would say look at it as an entirety, but maybe we don't want it every three years. Maybe we want it every, you know, maybe every three years, and if they didn't have any violations in three years, then maybe they can be every five years.
I understand that, I'm just trying to understand what's expected in the November meeting. Is it, is it to take Glen Rocks ordinance and change the language to new freedom?
No, I think we should just look at it and we can all come back and say-
I just wanna understand what the-
Yeah, I think you need to do anything you write at this, so I think it's the council's responsibility to come back with recommendations.
Carlisle, for example, they do the three-year, and if you haven't had any violations, then they up it to five.
And if you have violations, if there's two-
And maybe if, uh, we want, they don't have, that I saw in here, between, you know, uh, rentals, um, and being available, maybe that's something that we add in. But we currently have, where landlords are supposed to be telling us, um, telling us-
Anytime a resident changes, they're supposed to be notified. We don't even have a list of that.
So much stuff, I can just hear. Yeah, I don't remember, but they, landlords should already be notifying the office, um, yeah. When, um, they have, well, they're like ninety days, I think it is, when they come, when they go, and that's obviously, that's not being done, but I think this is something good that protects the homeowner and it protects the renter, and it protects the borough and the residents that love this neighborhood.
So we're gonna come back next month and review it, and everybody will have comments?
There was a motion to second, so we just need to-
Yeah, is that, that's what, that's what the motion says, is that summarize it? Sorry. Is that good?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry?
Aye.
Ours? My vote is aye. Okay, draft lines club agreement. Forget no jack.
Sorry. Fifty-some pages here.
Um, I guess to talk about, I'll make the motion that we, uh, that we accept the agreement.
I have a motion.
I'm sorry.
Lines club agreement.
Oh, second.
And a motion is second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, under, um, I guess section three, it says sixty days and then it has ninety, uh, next, next to it.
Section three?
Section, section three is very bottom of the paragraph, I guess.
Oh, sixty or ninety?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, which?
It's a sixty, ninety.
Sixty. What's it, what's it supposed to be?
Um.
Ninety.
Ninety? Okay. Um, and then in section six, I just had a question that says in A, it says to empty, uh, to empty as needed the wastewater collector for the improved building and any temporary structures, uh, connected to the wastewater collection system at the park. There's no wastewater collection in there? Are they talking about the grease traps?
There's, there's a-
It's a cistern?
Yeah, there's basically a cistern tank in between the buildings that all the, um, all the sinks feed into, and then our wastewater staff brings the back truck down and that's getting cleaned out and taken to the treatment.
Alright, so we're not actually connected to something-
Not, there's no, no, no.
What's that called, gray water?
Oh, it's, yeah. Yeah, it is gray water.
Okay.
Number nine, borough shall require all renters to clean personal property of the Lions Club with rental completed. Whose responsibility is to make sure that's happening?
We addressed that in the last meeting, that would be on the borough staff to make sure that obviously there was no damage when those facilities are there.
Borough staff, who? Is it Public Works? Is that Public Works? Are you going down to look? Who, who is going?
It would be any, anybody in the staff.
Are we able to make that specific for accountability?
Absolutely. That's why it's correct.
Public Works?
Yeah, it would just be someone from Public Works.
And can we add that in? And, uh, following up that last sentence, borough also agrees to promptly replace any lost or damaged items due to rental, uh, rentals to others. Is there a security deposit for broken or missing items when this is rented?
Um, there's a, there is a security deposit for those buildings, when the buildings are utilized, yes.
Is that like the thirty dollars or like something like that?
Well, the, the rental of the buildings is very cheap, yes. Uh, it's minimal.
Um, is there able to be, you know, something like a hundred and fifty, two hundred dollar deposit, some, something, so that if something is damaged, easily replaced, cleaned, Public Works notifies you, they do not get their security deposit back?
Correct. Yeah, and we can update that when we do Miss Lingsby schedule.
At the end of the year, Miss Lingsby schedule for this?
Uh, Miss Lingsby is all-
Uh, for the park?
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I would tend to agree that I think that probably needs to be increased because-
Up to two fifty-something.
Right, similar to what we do with the new set.
Yes. And number ten, Lions Club, um, has a non-exclusive use of the small brick building. I just wanna be very clear, REC also uses that small brick building, so it says non-exclusive, I understand that, but REC will all, will be allowed to leave their things in that building.
Absolutely. Yeah, they had, the original wording had exclusive use, we changed to non-exclusive.
To non-
Yeah.
I don't think it needs to say REC, but just what's on the record, REC currently uses that brick building.
Absolutely.
That's all I have.
Anybody have anything else?
So we, we have, in good faith, eleven, in good faith to discuss any demolition, instruct, uh, construction or improved projects, but we're still big brother that tells them what we're gonna do, no matter what they say.
Well, but they do have a say. I mean, they're, they're appointing representatives on the feasibility study and master site plan, so they're gonna know well in advance before, um, even any grants are applied for what, what that feasibility study and master site plan sets.
And, um, is it Dave?
Her husband?
Don? Don, yeah, so, I got the D.
Yeah.
It's pretty.
But you appoint the borough those returning all authority to turn the other-
Right.
Yeah.
At the end of nine, I would like to, if we're gonna be doing a security deposit, I want it, would like to add it in there, that pursuant to the current security deposit. So you'll, you'll add that in there? No, add that in this, in this.
Yeah, no, it needs to stay into the resolution at the time. That way, when that security deposit is changed in the future, it always relates to-
Okay, so for the resolution, whatever it is, that you're, you're gonna put-
At the current time, yes.
-in here, okay.
So do we have to amend the other rental resolution?
Another resolution?
We have a motion of fees.
Oh, yeah, but that'll be- Oh, yeah, but that'll be done later.
That'll be done as part of the budget.
Do we amend that, or do we have...
You do it every, we do it every year in December.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, as part of the budget process.
Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Posh? My vote is aye. Okay. Consider...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to draw it out. The clarification, that motion is to make these changes, get it back for signature, and then get it to the Lions Club.
Right, okay, sorry.
I wanna make sure that was the intent of the motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They were supposed to be here tonight, and they, well, you totally weren't. Because of, I don't know, something about a... So we'll either decide to do that, maybe I can just do it at the next Lions Club meeting.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay. Consider approval of the land development plan for New Freedom, VFW seventy, twelve, and Winters.
Good evening. I am Joshua George, Land Works Civil Design. We are the Civil Engineering Land Management Firm for the VFW project at Wintersfield Park.
I am Captain Jack Smith, retired, and I am the commander of the VFW.
So before you tonight is a land development plan for the proposed VFW. What we would like to do is to request your approval of that plan based on a few conditions that were outlined at the Borough's Planning Commission meeting a few weeks ago. And I will begin with a very brief overview of the project, because we are a little late here in the evening. So what we would like to do is to construct an eight thousand, six hundred and forty-square-foot building at Wintersfield Park. As you know, the park is owned by the borough, and there is a lease agreement between the borough and the VFW to allow this facility to be built and to be used by folks who would patronize the VFW for social gatherings, whatever might be going on at the VFW at any given time. The proposed project would continue to utilize the existing access drive that goes back into Wintersfield Park. There would be some minor roadway improvements associated with that access drive to make it slightly wider than it is now. If you're familiar with it, it's a little bit narrow where it meets Constitution Avenue, and we would like to widen that out. So that work, because Constitution Avenue is a PennDOT roadway, required a PennDOT permit, nothing in life is easy. And so that has been submitted to PennDOT and is currently under review with them. But the goal is to widen that out to make it safe for two-way travel in and out of the park for a more regular use than the park gets now as soccer fields and other recreation facilities. The project would be served by public water and public sewer, and would include approximately one hundred and one parking spaces for the VFW's use. And all of those parking spaces would be newly constructed. We would not use any of the existing parking spaces that are at the park. Those would remain for the recreational uses of the park itself. There are proposed stormwater management facilities. And just about a week ago, the York County Conservation District and the PADEP, Department of Environmental Protection, issued the NPDES permit for stormwater construction activities. And so that process and permit has been issued. So that was a nice feather in our cap to have that permit issued. I was talking earlier about your pipe project, when you're going through essentially the same process. Fortunately, we came out the other side. I hope, Godspeed, you can come out the other side of that process as well, so. So in a nutshell, those, that is the scope of the project. There were, I believe, six conditions of approval outlined at the proposed planning commission meeting a few weeks ago, where the planning commission did recommend that the plan be approved by council. Those comments are outlined in a letter from your borough's engineer dated August tenth. And with your permission, I'll simply mention those by number. They are item thirty, which is to provide a bond for financial security. And essentially, like all land development projects, the VFW would be required to post financial security to ensure that what are public improvements are in fact constructed. That would be things like stormwater management facilities, the roadway connection at Constitution Avenue, just to make sure that if the project got started for some reason, but was not completed, that there would be funds available to the borough to make sure that that project could be finished to create a situation where the health, safety, and well-being of the population is protected. So we would ask that a condition of that approval be that that financial security be posted, and it would have to be posted prior to the plan being recorded at the York County warehouse. That was number thirty on the warehouse letter dated August tenth. The next one is item sixty-seven, which is that the VFW must execute a stormwater management operation and maintenance agreement such that the VFW would maintain and operate the stormwater management facilities.
That don't happen at your meetings, I...
Oh, you don't? Okay, I apologize. I... Okay, well then, maybe I don't need to go through it line by line?
Uh, yeah, I think it needs to...
You still want me to do that?
Yeah, they need to be noted.
Okay, sounds good. The next two were actually combined, sort of because it's the same issue, but number sixty-eight and sixty-nine require that a PADEP sewage facilities planning module be approved by DEP. That's a document that says that sewer capacity is available in the pipes and in the receiving treatment plant. That's been submitted. The paperwork's been submitted. It's just not finally there.
How many EVUs is that?
I think it was three.
Three?
Yeah, yeah. Not a whole lot. Item seventy-two has been resolved. That was one of the conditions at the time of the planning commission meeting, but has now been resolved. That is the issuance of the NPDES permit. Item number ninety was just to provide an updated copy of what's called a PNDI, Pennsylvania Natural Diversity Inventory search to the borough engineer. Paperwork item, not a big deal. We have it. I just need to get it there. And then finally, item number ninety-three, which was to agreed upon at the planning commission meeting, where we would add some guide rail along the curve in the access drive so that when folks are leaving, in particular, not so much coming in, but leaving, you're coming downhill towards the exit on Constitution Avenue, there's a curve in that access drive. We wanted to be sure that nobody could skid off there in the wintertime or what have you, and end up down over the slope. So we were adding some guide rail in that location, and that was the outcome of the discussion at the planning commission meeting. That's number ninety-three. And that's it. Questions, comments, observations?
So this means all the recommendations from the planning commission now?
With the exception of those items that I just went through, yes.
What's the waiver criteria?
In so much as, there are some waivers associated with the project. I can read those off if you'd like.
Sure.
The first was roadway widening along Constitution Avenue. The ordinance has a provision that roadway frontage could be widened. We've asked for a waiver of that. This project has little to no impact on the traffic on Constitution Avenue, and we don't want to construct widening of Constitution Avenue for, not only because of the limited traffic impact, but also because, as you said earlier, it's a PennDOT roadway. It's a much more complicated process than just laying down a couple of feet of blacktop along the edge of the park. So we've asked for a waiver of that. We've asked for a waiver of the requirement that two access points be provided from the property. If you're familiar with the topography there, there is absolutely no physical way we can provide two points of access down on the Constitution Avenue. There is a one existing point. We've asked for a waiver to allow that to be the one point of access for the project. It can continue to be so. The third was that a waiver request that sidewalks along Constitution Avenue not be required. There are none in that specific area, and so constructing them along the property frontage didn't necessarily make a whole lot of sense to either us or the Borough's Planning Commission. The fourth was that curbs be constructed along Constitution Avenue. You can kind of see a theme here. We're asking for papers of roadway widening curb and sidewalk along Constitution Avenue again, for all of the same reasons. The fifth was a waiver from a twenty-five-foot steep slope setback requirement. There is a steep slope area along the southern property line, southeastern property line. And we are proposing to have some site grading within that twenty-five-foot area adjacent to the property line. We are proposing to construct a significant amount of landscaping in that area that would create a nice vegetative and visual buffer between the VFW project and the adjoining property. But this waiver would allow us to do some site grading in that specific area that would allow the project to be constructed in a manner that would minimize the amount of cut and fill that would be needed to be exported or imported from the project site. We're trying to keep all the dirt on the project site, and in order to do that, we want to have a little bit of flexibility in the grading. And then the last waiver request is for the traffic impact study. Interestingly, you know, the traffic process is essentially governed by PennDOT here because we are connected to a public roadway. PennDOT has a three-step process that is required for all highway occupancy permit applications. The first is a scoping application. The second is a traffic impact study. And the third is the preparation of the actual highway occupancy permit design itself. In this particular project, PennDOT actually waived the traffic study requirement because the amount of traffic generated by this project is very small. So this project, from PennDOT's perspective, has gone straight from a scoping meeting and application directly to the HOP plan and design for the physical improvements that are involved. So PennDOT has waived the traffic impact study requirements, and we are asking that the borough do the same.
I have a quick question. The gate that's in there now, does that go away?
Has to. Yeah, with the widening, it'll, it'll look more like a four-wich driveway at that point rather than a...
I wrote a letter a while back, when we first started this process, requesting that that gate be moved, if they wanted the gate to have it moved back closer to the fields and the Wickersfield Club site. We requested the borough to do that, so they could have access up to... A lot of, a lot of the people had to go in there and survey it and everything else, so they could have access to where I wouldn't have to run out with a key and unlock the place.
Yeah, the gate is on here. It is further down past the entrance.
That gate was put in to protect the soccer field from people driving on the soccer field.
Right.
I live in New Freedom and Constitution. Sounds like there's a lot of minimizing the traffic going in and out. There is a definite, in the last five years, you know, pickup in traffic. And catty corner across this, we're getting homes put in. Right now, there's thirty-seven single-family homes going in. Across the street from that, it's probably gonna come back for high density. Who knows how many are gonna go in there?
It's not across the street, it's down...
Catty corner.
Yeah, I mean, it's half a mile.
Right there on Constitution, though.
It's half a mile, though.
But you have people coming up for sports. You have people coming up for events. I think there's a lot more traffic...